Welcome to the September 23 meeting of the Watsonville City Council. If you could start with, with roll call.
Billisich.
Present.
Kaufman Gomez.
Present.
Dodge.
Here.
Fernandes.
Here.
Hurst.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Cervantes.
And now, the pledge allegiance if everyone can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the public for which stands one.
I have a translation equipment announcement. Para usar el aparato de traducir en español obtenga un aparato de la mesa junto de la caseta de traducir. Préndelo y usa el canal cero. Cuégalo en su cuello con la frente hacia afuera. Puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido y sin obstrucciones. Solo funciona dentro de la cámara del concilio. Por favor, regreselo antes de partir. Next agenda item is oral communication. Next is the oral communication from the public and then from the council. This is a time to address us on matters not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council. Please state your name and your district you reside in.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Letizia Mendoza. I'm here on behalf of the YWCA of Watsonville. A year ago, on August 27, 2013, you supported our request to forgive $47,000 loan to help us alleviate our financial situation. Today, I want to give you a brief update and follow up on the outcomes. Last year, the state allocated additional funding for early education to restore previous budget cuts. We were able to apply for this funding because our preschool wasn't good standing, meeting all state safety and program requirements. And also, because we had undertaken measurements to ensure good financial health for our agency. Our staff paid a portion of their medical costs and management took a 15% salary cut while working full time. Thus, on September 2013, we received an additional contract for $78,000 for restoration. Later, in November, we applied and were granted an additional $72,000, totaling more than $150,000. Thus, we were able to triple the money that you invested in one year. Most importantly, we were able to increase services from 64 children to 96 children. In addition, we restored full medical benefits for our staff and hired two additional teachers. Today, we continue to serve 96 children. Your vote represented trust, partnership, and community support. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Diane Manio Soiler, and I am happy to announce that I'm a new member of the YWCA board. And I'm here to personally thank you for your trust in the Y so that they can continue to offer services to women, teens, and children in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Garcia, candidate for city council District 5. As I mentioned at your last meeting, I'm going door to door and listening to many of our voters' concerns. And the most recent concern that was shared with me has to do with the slough trail between Pennsylvania and Main Street. What one of the voters said to me was that she walks her dog daily. And what she's saying is more and more homeless people along the trails that she became afraid. So now she walks with pepper spray because she wants to make sure she can protect herself. The other comment was that another walker spoke to a young, a little girl actually, and that the little girl said that one of the homeless men had chased her. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but if, I would imagine that any of the small children that walk that trail, they will become frightened seeing homeless men there. And so my question to you is, do our police officers walk or ride their bikes on that trail just to show the homeless that we're watching out? Be careful with your actions. If you don't, I would encourage you then, for safety of all parts of Watsonville, that you do have our police officers periodically walk through that trail to make sure that the homeless stay peaceful and do not harm in any way the walkers of the trail. Thank you very much.
Any other comments not on the agenda? The nun will bring it back to council for council oral communication. Councilmember Kaufman Gomez.
Well, let's see here. I'm just going to roll through a few announcements for us, things on the agenda. Kid Rages, which is our Jacobs Heart Foundation, will be having their event downtown at the Plaza this weekend. So I just want to make sure people know that that will happen on Sunday. We're having a firehouse barbecue. This barbecue is going to raise funds for us to finish the proceeds needed to go ahead and get the Second Street Fire Station Historic Museum painted. So we're encouraging you to come support that and we'll provide you with a meal on that for the tickets that the city here has available. October 11 through 12, we have the Air Show 50th Anniversary, including a car show that will be there. So we're encouraging, come on out to the Air Show and see what the event is going to be about there. And then we have Wine and Roses to follow up. Attended a Loaves and Fishes Meal Dinner Function for fundraiser for our local community, which raised about $60,000 for their organization to help our community in the meals that they do provide in our area here. And that's pretty much all I've got on my to-do list here. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Billisich.
First of all, we had a Zone 7 Flood Meeting right here in this room last Tuesday. And I want to thank all the people that took the time to come and express their concerns about the levee, the river, everything that's happening, South Spadis Creek, Paharo River. So it was nice to have the Board of Supervisors here in the room and members of that committee come to Watsonville. And so it was very nice to have the people from Bay Village and Paharo Village and the senior community and other areas of the city come and express their concerns. That was, that's positive. We have another meeting coming up in a couple of months right here again. So I want to thank you for attending. I also want to thank city officials, school district officials, employees, members of the community for the outpouring of condolences and sympathy for my mother who recently passed away. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Montesino.
Yeah, I wanted to report out that I also attended the Loaves and Fishes Event, which was a great event for our community because a lot of those proceeds go to feeding a lot of our community members here just a block away. I also wanted to report out and actually request that we do a traffic study over at Clifford and Crescent. Because I've been walking on Clifford, talking to a lot of the residents and they're advocating for a stop sign there. The traffic is just horrible. I just spent a couple of days there and it's just amazing how the traffic is. And I also wanted to congratulate, I was talking to one of the councilmember Hurst's residents named Ramon Monroe, and I told them I was going to mention this and advocate even though he lives on the other side. But they're all our concerns, even though I don't represent, but they're all our concerns for our community. And I'm also really concerned about a lot of homelessness in our slough trails. As Ms. Garcia pointed out, we need to take a better look, I don't know if it's police, but we need to get Public Works to clean up that area because they're used as traffic corridors for our kids. And I don't, I do not want to see incidents happen, stuff like that around those areas. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Hurst.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hernandez. You might notice that I have this sticker on and so does the clerk and the deputy clerk. This is celebrating National Voter Registration Day, and that's today. That doesn't mean that you can't register to vote tomorrow, or the next day, or the next day after that. You can register to vote up until October 20, but after that, you can't. So here's an opportunity, and I have the forms here, and I know that they're available throughout the community. And it's a chance to celebrate democracy and to give everybody an opportunity to participate in as fully as possible. You know, we have a history of low voter turnout in this community, and we need to change that. And we need to raise the bar about voter awareness and voter registration. There's a couple of other things that appear in the news recently that I'm concerned about. First of all, out of the 20,000 PVUSD students, 13,000 of them qualify for free lunch. That's parents earning less than $23,800 per year. That should be something we're concerned about. The poverty rate for children has surged, according to the newspaper, surged 31%, and now encompasses almost 19% of the youth, the children countywide. Of the 4,000 children that are homeless in the county, 2,000 of them are in the PVUSD attendance zone. Half of all the homeless children in the county reside in PVUSD attendance zone. And you might also have noticed the unemployment figures have come out recently. While they've dropped in the county, they're still exceptionally high in Watsonville with 14.7% unemployment in Watsonville, over twice that in the county. And lastly, thinking about statistics, 33% of the Watsonville High sophomores, and this was in the paper, failed to be able to pass the high school exit test, at least on their first time. And so voting's not going to fix all those issues, but voting can make a difference in trying to move the community forward. And so, once again, make sure that you're registered to vote and that you do exercise that right and responsibility. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Hernandez. I too wanted to be able to really mention really, really quick that, in having discussions with the Police Department and some of the businesses that are located in the Auto Center Drive area, there is a variety of concerns dealing with some of the homeless encampments that are rather large and some of our slough areas, which requires us to be able to interact with the Fish and Game Departments from the state. So there's some interesting dialogue going on pertaining to how we have to, as a city government, have to be able to interact with state agencies to be able to, before we can just go through and clear a lot of the areas. It's an ongoing dialogue that I'm happy to be engaged with, with some of the members of the Police Department. I also wanted to be able to, since we're doing requests for Public Works projects at the moment, in mentioning our slough trails, their corridors that pedestrians use, we've encouraged pedestrian and bicycle access in our communities. And I have mentioned at Public Works previously about possible solar lighting at the intersection of Clifford and Montebello. And I mentioned that previously to the Public Works Director and still want to be able to follow up on those discussions. And I would like to encourage everybody to be able to attend at the Paharo Valley Arts Council on Brennan Street, an exhibit that's going on right now called Through Our Lenses. Art is very important to our community and to our young people. We have a very, very talented group of folks that are presenting projects for photography, images of China and India. And I attended a reception at County Bank that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce also. And it was really good to be able to see a lot of young people there who I see in the audience today. So they're making the rounds, learning about community art and government all in the same week. So I'm happy to see a full crowd this evening, and I hope we have a good discussion on some of the future projects that are facing our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a few announcements and I guess some shout-outs to people. The first one I have is Community Action Board has a program where they're going to help people pay their water bills. So if anyone has, or if it's a low income or affected by the drought, they'll help people with their water bills. So Cab is right here in Watsonville, too. It's right here on the corner of East Beach and Main, if anybody's interested. Also, I want to give, you know, congratulations to our school district, which announced that they moved currently from their 90% graduation rate to 93. They moved up 3% in their graduation rates, which is a great accomplishment. I also, staying with the school district, I also want to congratulate Watsonville teacher Patricia Cortez Adago that was honored by the White House and President Obama on Monday. And we'll have a chance to honor her here at the next meeting. I also want to thank the Parks and Recreation and the Nature Center and Save Our Shores for coastal cleanup that did this at Ramsey and our slough trails. They had to clean up this last weekend, so I really want to thank them for that. I also had a chance to drop by the Zone 7 Meeting, and it was good to see other council members there. Of course, our representation Nancy Billisich. The other thing is I want to remind drivers that there's a new three-foot buffer zone between bikes law. You know, it's about safety and safety first and kind of encouraging people to ride bikes here in town. And the last thing is September 25 begins the Watsonville Birding Festival, Monterey Bay Birding Festival. So I want to encourage everyone to come out. If you've never gone birding, it's a great opportunity. You can, you don't have to buy binoculars, you can borrow them, you know, come out here. And the 25th, that begins. And that's it for my public comments. Next thing on the agenda, we'll have council report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council heard staff report on both items, the California Sport Fishing lawsuit and the Watsonville Pilots Association lawsuit this evening, but took no final action on either matter. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item 6.1, public hearing, consideration of conceptual mainstream improvement program and mitigated negative declaration, authorizing the city management to negotiate a contract for consulting services to engineer the main street improvement between Riverside and Beach Street. Now we'll have a...
A couple of words first.
Yes, a couple of words. First, we have some proclamations. Mayor's proclamation regarding Bi-National Health Week to Javier Aguilar Cuevas, General Deputy Counsel of Mexico in San Jose. So I want to present the proclamation. Let me read it to you guys. This is a proclamation for the Bi-National Health Week, October 4 through the 18, 2014. Bi-National Health Week has become one of the largest mobilization efforts in the Americas to improve health, well-being of underserved immigrants and migrants of Latin American origin living in the United States. Whereas, the main partners of national effort include Secretaries of Health, Foreign Affairs of Mexico, Ministries of Foreign Affairs of Guatemala, Bolivia, Honduras, Colombia, Ecuador, Peru, and the Institute of Mexicans Abroad, Mexico's Social Security Institute, the National Secretariat for Migrants in Ecuador, Colombia, NOSONE Program, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and several departments of the Public Health Council of Mexican Federations of North America, and the Health Initiative of Americas, a program of the University of California, Berkeley School of Public Health. And would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. And for us, it's important as a consulate, as a government agency, from Mexico to work together. And this Bi-National Health Week is really important. It's increasing the importance because now it's not just a week, it's more than three weeks. And it's no more bi-national, it's multinational because now we're working with different countries representative from another countries, Latin American countries. So it's important that we work together. Thank you very much. And we keep working together with Santa Cruz County. And we work with the four different counties here. It's our circumscription. And thank you, and we want to have a really good, good Bi-National Health Week.
Thank you. Is it okay if I? Bi-National Health Week, as has been said, is the largest mobilization of health-related information in the two, well, in North America, South America, and now pretty internationally. The official dates of the celebration are October 1 through October 21, but we extended out with activities throughout the month of October. During this time, the Mexican consulate joins with Santa Cruz County as well as San Benito, Santa Clara, Monterey Counties as well. There's celebrations going on throughout the tri-quad county area. And a lot of the health organizations here in Santa Cruz gather together to promote, celebrate, and highlight the health services, especially bringing more awareness and information to our underserved communities.
So our great committee represents more than 15 local organizations. And we join forces to bring together activities and information in venues throughout the county. Some of our highlights that we're going to be having this year are Dr. Steve Lopez from the University of Southern California. And we're going to be holding a day-long training for mental health professionals here on October 3. And then followed in the evening by a two-hour forum for the community at large entitled Reconociendo la Enfermedad Mental en Otros. That'll be October 3 from 6 to 8 here at this facility. And then Salud Para la Gente, in collaboration with PVPSA, we're putting together a health fair. We've done this collaboratively. PVPSA and Salud have done this. This is the second year in a row. And that's going to be taking place on the 10th of October from 3:30 to 6:30 at the Plaza in Downtown Watsonville.
And hi. Palo Alto Medical Foundation in Santa Cruz will also host a community forum on the 25th at 1:00 PM at the YWCA here in Watsonville, reporting on the research study Concert de Mama, which reports on the breast cancer treatment experiences of low-income Latinas in Santa Cruz County. And we welcome anyone who would like to come and give input on the findings that we've made, in particular for women who are underserved and there's some real health disparities that we found. Thank you.
So next, we have a presentation on Bi-National Health Week by Paharo Valley Prevention Student Assistance, PVPSA, by Jenny Sarimiento, Executive Director, and Gina Cole, Senior Tobacco Policy Specialist, and Salud Para la Gente, Nicola Sandoval, Health Educator Manager.
I think we already did our presentation. But if we could just highlight maybe some of the agencies that participate, Carlos got the big old list, but there, Salud Para la Gente is very, very instrumental in making things happen in the community. They're, again, put that health fair together on October 10, and it's in conjunction with the family, or sorry, the Watsonville Farmer's Market. And we have good, good support from the city of Watsonville for that, so we're really grateful. Again, bringing Dr. Stephen Lopez in, the daytime activities are mostly for providers. And you can access that information through Santa Cruz County if you call the Santa Cruz County Health Department. They're putting that one-day training together. Let's see. So we've got Santa Cruz County PVPSA, Paharo Valley Prevention and Student Assistance, Santa Cruz County Health Department, the Social Services Department, Mental Health Department. PVUSD is very, is a big supporter of Bi-National Health Week as well, migrant, early childhood education. Our faith communities are really involved this year, which is really nice. And the theme, I guess, this year is movement. Movement is health. Moviendo, salud is moviendo. And so we just encourage all of you to maybe take a look at your October and go for a walk. And maybe walk down to the Farmer's Market on the 10th. Does anybody have any questions? Thanks so much for the opportunity.
So I'll stay up here. Next, we have the mayor's proclamation for Second Harvest Food Bank declaring September as Hunger Action Month. I think before the presentation, I'll present the proclamation. I think before the presentation, I'll present the proclamation from the mayor. I'll read a portion of it. Proclamation from Hunger Action Month. CalFresh, the Supplemental Nutrition Food Benefit Program, formerly called Food Stamps, is a monthly benefit food purchase that helps low-income residents disproportionately at risk for negative health impacts gain access to healthy foods. And as 29% of Watsonville residents are living in poverty, yet many residents in need of immediate food assistance, are unaware that they may qualify for CalFresh. Present to you the mayor's proclamation.
All right, well, thank you, and good evening, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today on behalf of Second Harvest and on behalf of our community. Today, we're going to do a small presentation to you, you know, titled Homegrown Solutions to Hunger in Watsonville. Even though CalFresh, formerly known as Food Stamps, is a national program, anti-hunger program that alleviates families with the need of hunger, it's still, it's available here in Watsonville as well, and we need to utilize it as much as we can. If this thing, oh, yes, it works. So what is the need here in Watsonville? Well, as the proclamation says, there is about 29% of Watsonville residents that are living in poverty. CalFresh is the first line of defense against hunger, and not Second Harvest, as many people believe. A lot of people go to Second Harvest for food, however, their first line of defense against hunger is CalFresh. Yet, many residents in this county, and especially in the City of Watsonville, are in need of immediate food assistance, and unfortunately, they're unaware they might qualify for CalFresh benefits. There is about 10,522 individuals in Watsonville currently receiving CalFresh benefits or participating in the CalFresh program, but unfortunately, that's only representing 2/3 of the populations of those eligible to receive the benefits. 47th out of 58, that's Santa Cruz County ranks among the lowest, among the counties with the lowest participation in CalFresh. Out of 58 counties, we rank 47th, with, you know, losing 23 million in benefits that are not being utilized in 2012. California has had the lowest CalFresh participation in the country, so we are right there with California. There is a lot of families in need, obviously, that it makes the difference for families. It really makes the difference between making it possible for them to eat, and this is just a testimony from some families that we serve. CalFresh makes it possible to put food on the table for my two young children's while I attend college. Because of CalFresh, my children can eat healthy while I attend school to be able and serve a future for my children and myself. Keep CalFresh for those of us who need the temporary help. And that's really what it is. It's just a temporary relief to get families out of poverty. Still, CalFresh is a program that helps more families in need, even more so than other programs that are at the federal level such as EITC. EITC was helping with $79 billion at the federal level, and CalFresh was helping with $82.5 billion that are shooting into the local economy. So CalFresh lifts families, low incomes, local economy, and it helps the local economy while relieving hunger. Every $5 in CalFresh benefits generates about $9 in economy activity. I'm sorry. So when the community gets benefits, it trickles down to the local economy, and it generates, it doubles almost in local economy to $9, and the graph is up there. So full participation in our county in Santa Cruz will yield about $41 million in additional economy growth or economy activity if we manage to bring everybody to participate in this program. The way that it works, it will free up resources for the low-income people to use them somewhere else where they pay taxes, and the local economy benefits in that way by generating taxes.
So we also wanted to share some strategies. We're trying to increase awareness of CalFresh throughout outreach that we do from Second Harvest Food Bank, eliminating barriers throughout policy reforms. This would be such as adopting the same-day service for applicants, reducing the churn for families who don't lose benefits, so they don't lose their benefits, I'm sorry, for administrative reasons, integrating with, which is Cover California. So just to bring awareness, you know.
So there's a few strategies that we're working towards, and where we need the help of others. So next steps to follow or to do is, we really need to inspire collaboration. Inspire collaboration between government, social services, and the business community to elevate the Santa Cruz County CalFresh rank from 47th out of the 58 counties with the lowest participation to bring it to number one. By bringing that, we will be bringing $41 million extra in benefits to stimulate the whole economy. We also obviously need to raise awareness in our community to improve CalFresh participation and myth-busting. There is a lot of myths around this program, a lot of myths that there is, you know, such as that is for lazy people, and the truth of it is that a lot of working families are receiving this program, and they're receiving it because they're not getting paid enough in their jobs. We need to be working together to advocate against hunger and for a strong safety net and local food systems and the local economy. So as you notice, probably, we are, notice the orange in our t-shirts and ribbons. September is officially, September is Hunger Action Month, and it's being represented by wearing orange. You could wear an orange ribbon. I'm going to leave some here if you wish to, you know, help us raise awareness. Obviously, it's always a good talking topic, and, you know, just to know that there is hunger in our community, and there is hunger here in Watsonville as well. That's pretty much it. I am going to share with you as well, there is a, we have a September Hunger Action Month activities thing for you guys, and there is ways to get your input and to get you guys to do something. There is visiting food banks, and I invite you guys, all of you guys, to come down to the food bank and visit us. Please come see what we do at the food bank, how we do things, and we'd really, you know, love to have you guys there. Any questions?
I'll just make sure that the organization itself is very positive in our community here. I know that we had a function for, a dinner function for some fundraising for you for those efforts as well, and a quarter a meal. You're exponentially stretching that dollar in terms of what Second Harvest Food Bank is doing for the meals and the productivity of that in our community here. So I do commend the organization. You've got a very good core administrative group that is really as productive as you can be, and let's see what we can do in terms of increasing those numbers for this county and the representation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, I'd just like to thank our friends from Second Harvest for spotlighting and bringing to attention the need for better nutrition and more food accessibility in our community. It's a great big issue. And I'd also like to thank Deputy Counsel Aguilar Cueva back there for coming all the way over here this evening and for representing all of us in Bi-National Health Week. You know, disease doesn't stay on one side of a nation's border, or even on the other side of the county line or the river. And so, we're glad to help put a spotlight on disease control, and we see, you know, everything in the past from swine flu, and now Ebola, and smallpox, and other diseases, and how this just ravages nations and has a big effect that we all have to pick up the pieces on. So thank you so much for coming this evening and presenting and receiving the certificate and the proclamation. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
I too, really quick, would like to thank the folks from Second Harvest Food Bank. We appreciate all your efforts, and we appreciate everything that you do. The 29% figure that you cited in our community, being surrounded by billions of dollars worth of agriculture, and yet a hard time for access for our community to be able to attain fresh fruits and vegetables, is tragic. So I appreciate all the work that you do. Your reputation is stellar throughout four, five, six counties around the area, and we're very proud of you, and we're pleased. This is your form here, you have three minutes, and I encourage everyone else to be able to use that form to be able to express how we can, as a council, as a government, and as a people, can be able to assist you in all your efforts to fight hunger. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just also wanted to say kudos to both organizations, I mean, highlighting hunger, highlighting the needs of our community, and Bi-National Health Week, I mean, we're dealing with a crisis with diabetes in our community. And to realize that and to educate our community on that issue, because it's more relevant, especially now with school-age kids. So we need to just keep advocating, keep educating our community, our kids, our families to eat healthy options, to change to Cheeto habits, to soda habits. So I just want to thank you for both organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for the great presentation as well. Now, we're moving on to item 6.1, public hearing of the agenda. Sorry, I was a little excited about the downtown revitalization, that I jumped the start gate earlier. Item 6.1, consideration of conceptual Main Street Improvement Program and mitigated negative declaration authorizing city manager to negotiate a contract consulting services to engineer the Main Street Improvement between Riverside and Beach Street. If we can...
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, and community. I'm Keith Boyle with Community Development Department. Tonight, we are happy to present about a year and a half's worth of work with our design team. I have Kurt Overmeyer, Maria Esther Rodriguez, and Mike Bellinger, who is from BFS Landscape. And with that, I will let Kurt start the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. So I want to start with a little discussion about how we got to where we are today. About, a little more than a year ago, as Keith said, actually closer to a year and a half, we got together a group of stakeholders, and those stakeholders were comprised of business owners, property owners, residents of downtown, community groups, and then also we had four of you rotate in and out in that group. Councilmember Hernandez, Councilmember Kaufman Gomez, Councilmember Hearst, and Councilmember Mayor Cervantes has all been, have all been involved in the group in one way or another. And with that group, we really invited every single property owner, every single business owner, every resident that we could get in touch with, and then also some interested community groups. And we started off with a series of five meetings. It was really based upon a tried-and-true method that was developed by a group whose name I won't mention because they'll charge us if we do. And what we did was, we started with these five meetings, and those five meetings were just starting with learning what the best practices were for downtown. And then we sent everybody home with homework, and they came back after going to visit cities and presented about what they saw in cities and downtowns that they really liked, and what worked, what didn't work, what was compelling to them, what they thought might be compelling to other people. And then, from there, we're able to kind of figure out what some best practices were, and some best practices that really fit with Watsonville. And in the midst of that, after we had all the stakeholder meetings and our field trips, we also had some online forums with a lot of help from Civonomics, a Santa Cruz-based company that is here tonight, and then we also had a series of community meetings. And what we were really trying to figure out is, what do we need to do with our downtown to make it a world-class downtown, to make it a destination, to make it a place that people want to be? And you'll see that there's one big green circle there, and that was the one thing that went through all of the best practices that were established, not just in California, but throughout the United States, Canada, and really the world. And that's the slowdown traffic. Right now, our traffic in downtown operates unless there's a lot of congestion at an average speed of about 40 miles an hour. And what we discovered in going through this process, what you want that average speed to be is about 23 miles an hour. We also figured out that the reason for that is that it's important that the downtown be something that's comfortable and safe for pedestrians as well as for cars, and also other modes of transportation, including transit and bicycles. And what by doing that you did was you improved the overall visitor experience. We also figured out that we needed to do a few other things, that we needed to plan for success here, and that means, and we'll talk about that on the next slide, that we need to implement some other companions to what we're talking about tonight, and that we need to build the infrastructure to succeed. And that's really what we're talking about today. So our first big goal, as established by this group, was to create a plan for the streetscape that'll activate the street, improve the pedestrian experience, and encourage reinvestment by the property owners. What we've seen over the course of the last 30 or 40 years is a cycle of disinvestment in our downtown, where, you know, various economic shocks happened, people moved out of downtown, businesses left downtown, and what the result of that was is that a lot of property owners stopped investing even in the basics in their property. So what we want to try to do is arrest that cycle of disinvestment and to create a virtuous cycle of investment. So to do that, we need to do some public-side infrastructure improvements. And we need to work at the same time with our existing property owners to help them figure out how to upgrade, to invest, and then to improve. And we also need to put the infrastructure that we need in terms of the legal framework as well as the actual physical structure of the streetscape in place. And so that needs to include a parking district, a specific plan that will make it easy for property owners who own opportunity sites or existing buildings to figure out what they should do with those buildings. And we need a merchants association. And merchants association would take care of some of those things that you hear about all the time, you know? Buildings aren't clean. Sidewalks need to be cleaned up. There's no way for businesses right now to take their dollar and put it with their neighbor's dollar and to do some promotions around the great businesses that we have downtown and the new businesses that should result from what we're doing here today. So with that, I would like to ask Mike Bellinger to present. Oh, I forgot, we got to go through Livermore. I skipped two slides. So one of the things that we, one of the cities that we visited was Livermore. Our stakeholder group visited Gilroy and Morgan Hill. But we also had a group of businesspeople and city staff and elected officials that went and visited Livermore before we even started this process. Reason we visited Livermore is pretty clear. They had a four-lane highway running through the center of their downtown, and as you can see, if you look at the upper right-hand corner, that downtown wasn't functioning in a way that any of us would call awesome. You know, it was really rundown. They'd gone through a similar cycle of disinvestment, and they'd done a lot of the things that the City of Watsonville's done over the years to try to fix that while maintaining that four-lane road. And you can see that they put in some brick banding, they put in street trees, they put in some bollards to make a, to separate the pedestrian areas from the vehicular area. And it just wasn't up to the task. It wasn't enough. Then, in 2005, they really made some significant changes, and what they did was they reduced the travel lanes down to two lanes in each direct, or to one lane in each direction, and created these wonderful outdoor areas where people could gather. Some of these, you'll notice on the lower right picture that there's a fenced-in area that's... area that seems to be out in the street. Well, that's a, it's a parklet, it's a temporary area. In the winter, when it's raining and people don't want to be outdoors, they pack it up and move it inside, and they gain two parking spaces by doing that. But during the summer, during really 10 months of the year in Livermore, they have this wonderful outdoor dining experience that's available to everybody, and it's, and it's resulted in a huge economic benefit. They went from having about a 50% vacancy rate to having a less than 5% vacancy rate in their downtown. They went from having sales in their retail stores of about $100 a square foot to having retail sales closer to $300 a square foot. They went from having restaurants that were selling $300 or $400 a square foot to restaurants that were selling between $600 and $900 a square foot. And all of that was accomplished simply by making those street-side improvements. And this is another example of where they went from a place where they had a really wide street, really wide infrastructure for cars, made a great place for people. And with that, turn it over to Mike, so he can talk about what we're proposing.
Well, building on, my name's Mike Bellinger, landscape architect. Building on the foundation of what the Downtown Task Force and city staff have been working on, we wanted to launch into that design component, and we took a look at all the current city planning documents. There's the Downtown Vision Plan, there's the Urban Greening Plan, but there's also some new regional regulatory issues, you know, promoting complete streets, which is enhancing major traffic corridors for bicycle and pedestrian. There's low-impact development programs now by the state, which are trying to activate cleaning up our stormwater runoff off these major streets. So, the next step was looking at the, the general plan, Vista 2030, and you find within the general plan, specific direction towards taking the downtown through-street renovation, building public spaces that would benefit the private development down there and support revitalization. In, in the urban design section, you can, we illustrated here that Phase 1 really begins at Riverside Avenue and extends up to Beach Street. Currently, that's the, the segment of the former highway, or it still is a highway, but the city now has control over it. So, that's, that's an opportunity for the city to kind of push ahead with some of these new ideas. The other part of the Watsonville General Plan was to identify that Main Street really was an opportunity to slow that traffic down, and that's where this talks about it being a two-lane street, enhanced for bicycle traffic, enhanced for pedestrian activity.
And again, going back to the concept of what we, what we need in downtown to make it something, it's a destination, a place that people want to be, is to slow down traffic. So, part of the studies that we, we needed to do was to look at what that would do to the traffic from going to four lanes to two lanes. Now, granted, traffic is something that, it is quite daunting, especially when you go out in the evening and see the, the amount of traffic that we have in our, in our Main Street here downtown. So, we want to make it something that's inviting to pedestrians and motorists, but we want it to still flow and work for everybody. So, again, in studying the phase that we're looking at between Riverside and Beach Street, the intersection in between is indeed Main and Second Street. And what we found out is, when we went from four lanes to two lanes, on the slide in front of you, it shows what we call levels of service. We grade our intersections from A to F, A being there's no traffic, it's very easy to get through, and F being it's bad, just like in school, you don't, you don't want to go to F. So, with today's traffic, Main and Second Street operates in the evening at a level of service C, which is about average. And what we find, found with the road diet, when we went to one lane in each direction, it actually improved things, because along with going one lane in each direction, we thought we'd, it would be an opportunity also to address the traffic operations at the signal. We would do a modification to that signal. Currently, it operates with Second Street going separate from Maple Street, and if we put the, those phases together and put in a left-turn lane, then we can make the whole operation at signal work better. So, in fact, with the project, would improve the level of service at that intersection. And again, traffic flow would be improved and also be inviting for pedestrians, bicycles, and motorists could be able to get through in this Phase 1.
So, continuing with the, the workshops that the city started in the Downtown Task Force, we met back up with them, and they reiterated that. What we wanted to create were attractive downtown spaces that would support the downtown businesses. That included making the, improving the lighting downtown, that would not only support businesses, but would also support college activity, and enlivening those public spaces downtown for more activity. So, as we got to our public workshop, and our boards are exhibited here in the back along the wall, we had tremendous support, and it really came down to several issues. One, people truly supported the, the change of traffic, because they really felt that it would make it a safer place to be. They were very supportive of the contemporary downtown character, because not just to, you know, we don't want to just honor the historic part, but we want to be competitive with other communities that offer more attractive, vibrant downtown. So, we want to create spaces that will attract visitors to stay a little bit longer, to attract new visitors that might be traveling to the region, and, and bring those outside people in to really discover what Watsonville is about. So, those principles were really taken on through design, creating spaces that were safe in the downtown for pedestrians and cyclists, and, and creating more public spaces that were supportive of the downtown businesses. And while we're doing that, while we're creating those spaces, support the environmental ethic that the city is really famous for in the Monterey Bay region. So, this is really our first phase between Riverside and Beach Street, and what you'll see is, there's, the traffic begins to narrow from Riverside, and by the time you hit First Street, that's where it's down to two lanes. And at that point, what we're doing is, we're bringing the curb area out, which shortens the distance for people trying to cross the street. And we've introduced a median that provides a little bit of a refuge, but also begins to be repeated down the street, that brings a little bit of color, it allows us to bring signage in, and it's also, as you'll see in some of our later photos, an opportunity for planting. So, at this point, you'll, you'll begin to see our sidewalk reaches out, narrows the street, and we introduce the median. And in the next slide, you'll see that we've widened the street, there are what we call a rain garden, this is where we're going to capture the stormwater runoff, we're going to use the medians for that stormwater runoff, but we're adding bike lanes that will allow us, allow the city to comply with the new rules, which is to provide that safe zone with cyclists and traffic. The plantings will be readily supportive of the stormwater, but bring some color into the downtown. There's really some newer approaches to planting, which the city is already adopting in many other places, but will be attractive seasonally, and as you can see, we're going to bring that signage program back through these medians. We're also going to use patterns and, and color in the crosswalk areas. Again, several times, it's been pointed out, the rich cultural arts community in Watsonville, this is an opportunity to kind of bring back something more exciting than just a standard Caltrans sidewalk. You can also see in the sidewalk plantings, it allows us to bring in some new, some new planting, some things that are very drought-tolerant, very attractive, but can also be cleaning the stormwater off that, that are now the new regulations for the downtown. Moving down the street to Second and Maple and Peck, you'll see the same kinds of things, where we're widening, we're widening the sidewalks, which reduce the travelway, we're introducing the median where we can, but we're still allowing the left-turn lanes. So, again, you see, this is, it's very similar, we've got the cross, the crosswalks that are highlighted. This is also the intersection where we're changing the traffic signals to, we've introduced the left-turn lane, and this will help facilitate the traffic moving down Main Street. In fact, it will enhance that operational transition. Again, the, the planting, but we're also looking at introducing, again, some more modern kinds of street furniture and creating a little bit more vibrant public spaces. So, as Kurt pointed out, by widening the sidewalk areas, it allows the private businesses an opportunity to, to bring their businesses out to the public. And when people are driving down Main Street and can see the activity of a business, it invites them to stay a little bit longer. In some of the other public spaces, again, the Watsonville has a, a great reputation for arts, this, there's great more opportunities for introducing some art, involving the community, bringing outside artists, but those are the kinds of things that attract tourists back. They're the kind of things that interest people to stop and pause and spend a little bit more time. So, here at Fox Theater, we've kind of illustrated how we've created some small public space just outside of it, created a small barrier, and there's seating back behind it, but you can see how we widened the sidewalks, introduced benches, and patterned that sidewalk crossing. Across the street, in front of the new building that should be open up pretty soon, again, introducing planters and some, and some modern contemporary furniture that I think will be more attractive to visitors. Kurt mentioned, in front of that one restaurant, there was an opportunity where people seasonally brought out their tables to take up a parking space. It could be for dining, it could be for, you know, a, a particular event where a business wants to demonstrate their goods, or it could be a regular sale that they do. But these are examples of how you can not necessarily create an expensive widened sidewalk area, but you could just use some planting or some simple barriers to create those, those people spaces. Some people have chosen to, to create a, a parklet space, an outdoor space that can actually be flush with a sidewalk. So, you really widen the sidewalk space without necessarily changing the stream flow of stormwater in the street. At Peck, this was an opportunity to kind of build on what is there in terms of the farmer's market and expand on the idea of, of that as a universal street, which allows a mul, a variety of uses, as you have today, you have the farmer's market, but it would take the next step and create even more of a lively street space for more events throughout the year. So, we could interject some special paving and some, to highlight some areas, we could use some new street furniture in the forms of sculpture as bike parking, and introduce other kind of interesting elements to the public spaces. This is just another photo simulation of how that would look adjacent to Peck Street. Again, bring that median in where you don't need a left-turn lane, but introducing that color and that signage. At the plaza, we heard a, a lot of public comment about opening that up and, and making the plaza really a much more active part of the Main Street. So, we've made some recommendations from, you know, creating the amphitheater space to increasing some areas for events, to just upgrading the planting. Kind of looking beyond this current phase, a lot of community members were very interested, again, in, in talking about how we, can we use our public spaces to a greater degree. So, we've identified the connection between City Hall and the Civic Center and started talking about ideas that might be able us, be able for the community to use those spaces a little bit more frequently. So, we could create some outdoor seating spaces outside City Hall, we could take out some of the parking and introduce a small lawn area right across from the, the youth center, and, and there could be afternoon and evening activities there that would bring people into the downtown. Again, across the Civic Center, there's some grand spaces there that would be very attractive to support, we have everybody coming to the library, an opportunity for sculpture and seating and play also there.
So, again, we have run through a couple of community workshops that have been very well-attended, over 100 at each of those workshops. And in those workshops, the community has really indicated a need and a desire for change. And what you have before you tonight represents a bold vision, it's a major change, there's some risk, but we think that it is really a positive risk that the community will benefit from and will enhance the downtown environment and encourage more downtown development, putting in the private partnership, public-private partnership. There is a project budget for the project of about 400, $545,000, including about $500,000 for implementation and $50,000 for design. There was an environmental review conducted for this project, a mitigated negative declaration was circulated in July through August for 30 days, as required by state law. Through that comment period, there were two comments received, both of them were positive. One was from the Regional Transportation Commission, which identified the desire that they have for doing complete streets, which includes pedestrians, bikes, et cetera. They felt this really promoted that, they liked the idea of slowing things down, the Air District also was very supportive of it, because slowing down the traffic didn't, reduce the air pollution associated with it. One of the primary mitigations, or one of the only ones that was identified as part of this, was removing the split-phase timing from Second Street and Main Street by adding the dedicated left turn to Maple Street and then removing the cross signal. So, it actually improves the flow of that intersection, which allows, although it's counterintuitive, this will provide as much capacity as the, the current does, and you will actually get through Second Street faster than you do now, almost 10 seconds faster. Next steps in this process, we have a resolution for the council, considering the conceptual design plan and negative declaration, a resolution allowing the city manager to release the RFP for the project implementation not to exceed $500,000. And we're also looking at creating a public-private partnership, where we would talk about crowdsourcing for those areas that we do not currently have the funding for, for the plaza, for areas in front of the library and in front of Old City Hall. We are looking at creating a program where we would have the, the community be able to dedicate some funding towards that, if they were desiring of that. So, that is, in a couple of weeks, we're working with Civinomics to start that program. So, again, we're kind of excited, and we've heard from the community that they're willing to look into doing that. So, as a recommendation to the city council, we're recommending you approve the resolution to adopt the conceptual plan, authorize the city manager to release the RFP and award bids for engineering of the downtown improvements, and allow the $545,000 already budgeted from Economic Development Fund and the CDBG Fund to go forward for this project. This is a great opportunity for the community to take a big step forward in helping improve downtown, and we have heard from the community that that is a very big priority. Concludes our presentation.
Thank you, thank you for the great presentation. Now, we'll take it back to council for questions.
Councilmember Dodge?
Thank you very much. This has been, I'll just ask a couple of quick questions, so we can keep this moving along, I really like to hear from the public this evening. How many hearings was, did the committee have?
We've had two public workshops, and we've had about nine, nine stakeholder meetings. And it also was presented at the Planning Commission, although they did not take action.
Traffic numbers, you heard the complaint about traffics and how this is altering traffic. I know you were trying to give it a grade between A, B, C, D, E, F. Again, could you just sum that up really quick with, without, without the grade on how the, the left turns will be able to allow people to continuously flow through?
So, currently, the, and we're talking about the intersection of Meccan, I'm sorry, Second and Main.
Correct.
Street right here at the corner. Currently, the, the signal, the way it's set up, allows for Main Street to move, and there's left turns, protected left turns, if you're making a turn from Main Street onto Second or Maple. And what's happening on the side street is that Second Street goes separate, and then Maple Street goes separate. So, by eliminating, that's what's called a split phase, by eliminating that split phase and providing a, a left-turn movement, that they can both turn left and then go through at the same time, that improves the circulation there. at the same time, that improves the circulation there, which improves the level of service grade.
That was the term that I wanted to hear from you, is that it improves circulation.
Yes.
Because we've dealt with that with the roundabout discussion about.
Circulation.
Improvement circulation. You did say that there was a letter from, I'll be really quick, you did say that there was a letter from the Regional Transportation Commission, which myself and Director.
That's correct.
Councilmember Montesino are both members of the Regional Transportation Commission. And this goes along the lines with Complete Streets, AB 375, and the Sustainable Community Strategies. Can you state a little further on why the Regional Transportation Commission is supportive of this plan?
Again, they were very supportive of the plan because it demonstrated the things that they are trying to direct other communities to do. So enhancing streets by providing bicycle opportunities, by reducing speeds to allow more pedestrian access. They felt that this was a very good step to move forward in making the downtown a better place and were quite supportive. A telling thing was that Caltrans made no comment on this. That was big. We get Caltrans comments all the time, and we're working with Caltrans to relinquish Highway 152. I take their silence as a very positive sign that they are willing to move forward with the relinquishment and are supportive of this concept.
I'm glad you mentioned that, since I brought forth that idea of Highway 152 relinquishment before this council three years ago. And looking and citing that, and looking at Livermore as the example, they moved and rebuilt Highway 84, which used to run through their downtown. They moved it around the city. Because, and maybe Kurt, you can explain why this is different in the sense that Caltrans is talking about relinquishment as opposed to building a highway around the city.
It's simply because Caltrans is also approaching transportation with a more holistic point of view, and they no longer require that you find a replacement facility as long as you're able to meet the level of service standards. You don't have to go through that whole process of finding a replacement facility. You just have to let people know where the start of the highway is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you very much, staff.
Councilmember Bill Sitch?
Do you think maybe Caltrans would look at relinquishing it because they no longer would have to fund it? They wouldn't have to come up with any money. It would be the city of Watsonville's responsibility for Highway 152 plus this new component. State's always looking to save money. This would be a good way for them to save money. Have you counted how many cars use Main Street at 5:00?
We actually do have those numbers.
How many are there at Riverside and that intersects Riverside and Main, 5:00?
That I'd have to get back to you, but I would imagine, and it's in the vicinity of about 15,000.
Lot of cars.
On a daily basis.
Okay. And what is our plan? Where are these cars going? What are we going to do with the extra traffic?
Well, currently, I wanted to emphasize, this is for Phase 1, so it's between Riverside and Beach.
Right.
So some cars, if they're choosing to want to get from a point on one side of the city to another point, may choose to go another route. We don't know that. If they're coming through downtown to visit downtown, they would continue to come through Main Street. And it is a bit counterintuitive to go from four to two lanes, and that's going to improve traffic. But what happens is, it's more of a continuous flow versus places to move around.
It's going to improve traffic, how?
Because with speeds moving slower, people can move more continuously. And again, that's a little bit counter too, but we've seen that again with some of these other cities that that's happened to, four lanes to two lanes. Again, people may choose to go different locations. If they're wanting to get home fast and they choose, they think now that Main Street's moving a little slower, they could possibly go another way.
And that might be Rodrica Street, which is already two lanes and residential, or Union Street, which is two lanes. I mean, it's...
Sure, and it could even be Highway 1.
Could be, but I don't know if they'll go all the way out to Highway 1 just to get on the other side of town. You talked about improving bicycles. I mean, they had to have almost a whole lane. What are you going to do about skateboarders? I mean, you know, kids are kids, and they're going to have more sidewalk space, they're going to want to go down. I mean, and we're talking pedestrians, but let's get real, we've got kids and that's a transportation thing for them. What are we going to do about all the skateboarders?
I believe that could be something that we would explore a little bit more, and even if it's something that we need to enforce, we could do that, but we haven't specifically looked at that at this point.
In most cases, the sidewalks aren't expanded. I mean, the sidewalks stay the same. You're looking at some bulb-out areas where the crosswalk areas will be extended out. But the sidewalk, in order to save costs, I mean, most of this stuff is done with striping. So the parking spaces, the lane reductions, everything is done with striping, so...
Not additional cement?
Not additional cement, no. You're not, the only places that you're adding cement are at the intersections. So like at Second Street and First Street, those will get some additional bulb-outs to reduce the amount of distance that pedestrians travel, but the primary sidewalk will stay the same size, won't change.
What do you mean by a parking district? What is that? Is that a cost? How's that work? What is a parking district?
Well, we have traditionally, we have had in the past a parking district, and it was set up to fund some bonds that built the Beach Street Garage. When the bonds were paid off, that parking district effectively ended because it no longer generated any revenue. What a parking district does is it creates a source of revenue that allows the city to increase the number of available public parking spaces, to bond for purchasing structured parking, and to maintain and operate the existing parking.
So what do you mean? Are you going to add parking meters? What does it mean, a parking district? How are you going to generate revenue?
A lot of ways to crack that nut, you know.
Let me hear some options.
But yeah, it really isn't part of what we're doing today. The parking district's a future thing, and there are a lot of ways to do it. We think that to develop that parking district, we need to work with the stakeholders in the parking district and figure out what's the best way to accomplish generating the revenues that are needed to produce enough parking to satisfy the parking demand downtown.
I only ask because you brought it up. You said we're going to have a parking district, so I want to know what kind of options we're talking about.
It's a future step, and it could be anything from an assessment on to a property, to an assessment on business owners, to an assessment or to metered parking or some combination of all of those. There's a lot of different ways to do it.
And that's, I think, one of my concerns, is if you have a parking district, that's fine, but what does it entail? Does it entail an assessment on a business? Do the business owners know? I mean, those things they should know ahead before we keep going with this.
Again, this is, that's going to be part of a bigger study. We talked about doing a specific plan. We talked about doing some additional studies. Right now, we're focused on this improvement to Main Street. The additional portion of it is future study.
Just to clarify, that any parking district will be approved by the property owners. So it's not going to be a city-driven thing. We're going to work to facilitate meetings, but it is funded and managed by the business and property owners.
Do all the owners have to agree, or how does that work?
They have to vote on it.
So what do you do with an entity like the post office? Do they have to agree to a parking district, or the bank, or the police station? I mean, you've got, where we have this and what we're talking about is an area that's more of a government center than, you know, restaurants and downtown type thing. So how does that work?
The city would participate like any other property owner. I'm not sure about the, I'm not sure about the, how the post office would work.
Yeah, again, and it's a much bigger project. That's all of downtown. That would be relinquishment, you know, much wider area. And we're not talking about, we're, you know, we're getting off track in regards to what the discussion is. There isn't a parking district associated with the discussion tonight.
But, you know, it's all part of the plan. When you look at the plan, you need to look at the whole thing. What about this merchant association? What is that about?
Right, and the Downtown Task Force is assigned to talk about all the different things. This is the first portion that's come out of the Downtown Task Force to move forward. You know, we will be going back to the, if this gets adopted, it will go back to the Downtown Task Force for our next portion of how we're moving forward. This is a longer-scale project than tonight. Again, this is the first phase of a much broader concept of how we move forward.
I am concerned about the parking because we already have parking problems downtown. People don't feel there's enough parking. There's issues all the time about downtown parking, the number of tickets that are given. This is a big plan, and when you look at a plan, you need to look at the complete plan, not just an aspect of it, in my opinion. I'm concerned about, you know, you want to slow the traffic down, but for what? To go to the post office? To go where? What is downtown that we're, I mean, we're looking at restaurants and streets. I see that. I see the picture that we have of Livermore. What's the difference between the economic base in Livermore and the economic base here? It's night and day. You're talking two different clientele.
It is, it actually isn't. If you look at our trade area, which...
It is not different, Livermore and Watsonville?
They, we have almost identical, almost identical income levels in our trade area as Livermore does. Almost exactly the same. There's 69,000, our trade area is 67,000, median income for a family of four. And they're very close. We probably, in Watsonville, within the city limits, have a higher concentration of low income residents, but when you look at how a downtown's going to function, you have to expand it to the entire trade area. Trade area includes areas outside of Watsonville, and in that trade area, there's not much difference.
I'd need to look at that because I have, I have a lot of questions about that. I've seen economic status in Livermore and Watsonville. In Watsonville, unfortunately, we do have a lot of poverty here. We're going to expand it like a walking area, and like there's going to be a lot of restaurants out there, and it's, the section we're talking about is, there aren't restaurants there. It's more government-centered.
Right. And what I think Kurt is trying to say is that the area is much bigger than just Watsonville. It includes Aptos, it includes Rio Del Mar, et cetera. That is the broader area that we're talking about with 69,000 people. This is a first step. This is intended, if it's successful, and we relinquish Highway 152. We cannot move forward right now with this on other sections of Main Street because it is a state highway. We would have to have the relinquishment. So this is a demonstration project, and the intent is that once we do this, we will have a model to go forward on our next steps. So I think people, this will give people a chance of getting used to it and moving forward with, you know, a concept. And I think you've got a lot of business owners here that should talk about this and see, we've heard a lot of support from those business owners in the concept. They want to see things done. They want to see things not be status quo. Thank you.
I think they do have some, of course, people want change. That's, I mean, something has to happen to the downtown. Can you tell me about the trees? Are these going to be new trees in the median that we're putting in?
Yes.
And are we also putting in grass and the whole thing, or what?
There will be, it's a limited area. I mean, Mike, you might want to talk about it in a little more detail.
We'd probably pick a tree that's been successful in the downtown area and staying kind of small in stature. The grasses we're talking about are ornamental grasses. It's not a turf grass that you would mow regularly, but a grass that would allow the stormwater to go in and filter in and allow that to kind of grow up. And it really is something that's cut once or twice a year.
How much have we spent so far on the plans?
The budget that the council adopted for BFS to do it was $20,000. So that included the traffic review of the road diet study, where we got the analysis from Ron Marquez, who is here, if you have some more specific questions. So right now, we're at about $20,000.
And when we go through with this Phase 1, what do we anticipate the total cost to be?
We're anticipating what's already in the budget is $545,000.
And is that, what funding is that?
It comes from Economic Development, that was already done, and CDBG. It's leftover program money that's come back and it's been assigned to this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions? Councilmember Montesino?
I don't think I have a question, because it's pretty clear, but I'd like to request a five-minute break for, I know some people here have, didn't attend the stakeholder meetings, and I wanted to give them an opportunity so they can look at the posters and stuff like that before the public session begins, but I don't know if that's a good idea, but that would be my request.
Do we need a vote from council, or how do we do? There consensus amongst the council members?
I'm fine for five minutes if that's needed.
Okay. I need a five-minute break too.
People want that.
Five-minute break. And please, some of the design that are up there?
So now we'll have the opportunity for public input. If there's any members in the public that would like to address us on the item on today's agenda, please state your name and district.
I still have questions from council before we're ready for public, unless you want to get to him back to me afterwards.
We can do it afterwards. There's a lot of people here waiting.
What about council?
Let's move forward with the public comments if we could.
Please make sure to state your name and the district which you reside.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Ariadna Renteria. I'm a business owner. My business is located right across the street from the Civic Plaza in Plaza Vigil. I've been in the area doing business and participating in the economy of this city for about five years. And I come here not to oppose the plans and efforts to redevelop and recreate the face of Watsonville downtown, but I come here to caution you about the difference between support and blanket approval. And I think there is an item in the proposal that you have before you today that requires that sort of blanket approval, and I think we need to be mindful of the difference of these two concepts. I'm going to direct your attention to the item, paragraph four of first page of the resolution proposed to you. And in stuck in it like an afterthought, there is the plan for enhancing the plaza and provide more visibility to the bandstand. I support, like most of us, anything that is a clearly delineated plan for improvement. However, some of the issues that you raised today show that there is a little bit of a problem with the contours. They're not well delineated, and then the future can cause problems. Do now, approve now, and fix later. This item here that I'm pointing out to you creates such a problem. There is not an outline of what is the proposal for the Civic Plaza. If there is not an outline presented to you, then there's nothing to vote on. Clearly absent from the PDF available to the public is this slide related to the proposed changes to the Civic Plaza. Is it because there is not an outline, or is it because that it was left out at the last minute? But there was such an outline in the last meeting on July 9. I was present, and I've been present in a couple of meetings leading up to this resolution. And it was not, it was joy around the idea of change, but I was not at a blanket approval about anything that was presented. It was a brainstorming session for the most part, and I raised concerns that I weren't at those meetings, that they were not fully addressed. One of the concerns was the plans for the plaza, and the most disconcerting part of it is that the plaza is a landmark of downtown's Watsonville. I love to see it. I see it every day. I walk through it. I enjoy its beauty and the uniqueness of the trees and foliage around it. But the proposed changes include paving part of the plaza, creating an amphitheater, and removing some of the greenery, some of the bushes, called, there was not a clear delineation of which one and why. So, I'm sorry, just have 10 seconds. So in the absence of a clear outline of what is going to happen to a plaza, for which there is no budget, by the way, it is premature to insert this in a resolution and vote on it and approve it. I think it needs to withstand public scrutiny, the scrutiny of the council members, and we need to know where we're voting now. There's nothing to vote on because there was not a slide, there is not an outline to let us address as a public, as concerned members of this community, what is going to be proposed. And again, I caution you against approve now and try to fix the problems in the aftermath. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ted Rico. I live in District 2, and I'm here to urge you to vote in favor of this proposal. I mean, I have to say personally, I'm not in favor of all the elements in the proposal, but I also recognize that there's been a process where people have had an opportunity to give input, that this is an attempt to fuse different ideas. It's part of a democratic process, and in any kind of democratic process, you're not going to get 100% of what you want. So I feel at this point satisfied that there has been a process that leads to something that, again, although not ideal, I think is a good starting point. I think, and again, we should move forward with this. Certainly, I would like to see a plan that was holistic, that goes all the way down to freedom. That's what we really need. But it, again, as a sort of a demonstration project, is something to get us going. I think that's fine. And, you know, I mean, overall, I mean, it's not that it's nothing but half a million dollars. It's not a huge amount of money, money for doing what we're talking about, so I feel comfortable, you know, urging you all to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Dobie Jenkins, and I reside in the Third Councilmanic District, what I like to refer to as Watsonville's Northwest Frontier. I am here enthusiastically, and I'm also a member of the, your city of Watsonville Planning Commission, representing that council manic district. And I do wish to enthusiastically endorse this plan. It turns out, I was also going to be here to invite you, and I have invitations here for you, to the upcoming 10th Annual Monterey Bay Birding Festival, which begins this Thursday. It'll be Thursday through Sunday. This is an example of something where the bird festival, through the leadership and the generosity of the city of Watsonville and its staff, we are taking advantage of your infrastructure here in this building. The birding festival is headquartered here. We're going to bring several hundred people, as we have for the last nine years, who will be coming from all over the country to enjoy the exceptional birding that exists in the Central Coast Monterey Bay region. They will be residing in the accommodations here in the city. They will be eating in the restaurants. They will be shopping in the stores. I think that the enhancements that are pointed out here in terms of landscaping and most likely increased restaurants, increased shops that will occur, will make this, the downtown even more attractive an area and attract even more people who will come here for birding or for a lot of other reasons related to the beauty and the productivity of Watsonville. So I, I would appreciate if the staff might pass out these invitations. It has the, the festival program, it has a brochure, it also has two tickets to our opening reception this Thursday evening, so we'll welcome all of you there to, to that event. But I particularly want to thank the, the city management, the council, and certain city staff members, Kurt Obermeyer, Doug Matos, and Vicky Ventora, who have been most instrumental in, in making this festival possible at this time and in years in the past. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Jim Van Houten, Arvola Drive. I'm here representing a group from Watsonville Wetlands Watch and the Sierra Club. It's been working for several years to try and bring the Paharo River into the downtown. The Paharo River Corridor is a huge asset. It can be. We don't want you to turn your back on it. The river, the Corps of Engineer project, the Levy Trail, the Future Rail Trail, the soccer fields in Paharo, all in that area are all assets that we'd like to bring together and, and, and enjoy. We like your present proposal tonight. We just don't think it goes far enough. We understand that your project has a fixed budget and a completed environmental analysis, so we know that, you know, so tonight, we're, we're asking that you go ahead with that project and approve that project, but we're also asking and that you direct your staff and your downtown task force to consider broader solutions to enhance your downtown, including the Paharo River, Riverfront Development Concept. We would appreciate the opportunity to present these ideas to your downtown task force, and we hope that one day we'll be bringing this back to the city council to incorporate this into your broader downtown improvements. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Kirby Harris. I live in District 7.
Hold the mic.
I know that downtown really does need to be revitalized. It needs lots of work. Yesterday, I watched the planning commission's meeting on, on the web, on the web, and they were talking about McDonald's being put in at the corner of Riverside and Main Street, or almost the corner. I've got two real concerns about that. They were discussing the ins and outs, specifically the drive-through.
Excuse me, that's the next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Right now, we're discussing the downtown revitalization.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Nancy Shaw. I'm from District 7, and I would just like to say that I believe in change. I believe that Watsonville needs the revitalization. I've been a, I've lived in Watsonville almost all my life, and that's a long time. I, I just, Watsonville has a lot of charm, and I walk all over the place. I walk through the plaza, and I see that if you go down there, it, it's falling apart. The cement, it, it's coming out of the bandstand. And I've been going to the plaza since I've probably seven years old. And, and I think that moving it down to two lanes, traffic is always, already really, really bad, and it's just going to make it worse. I don't care if it's at 23 miles an hour or not. You know, it's just not going to work, and it's going to cost Watsonville a lot of money to come back and redo, redo it if it is a mistake. And, and I hope it isn't, but I really think it's a bad idea. And, and I think that, you know, that's all I'm going to say. It's just a bad idea, and it's going to be really expensive to go back and clean it up.
Thank you.
Good evening, staff, city council. My name is William Al. I'm here representing myself and the Al family. We have property in the downtown district over on the Fifth Avenue block, and you will find probably not a bigger supporter of this plan. I love, downtowns are near and dear to me. I would love to see a revitalized and beautiful downtown Watsonville. It has all the element. It has all the charm. It has all what it needs to be what could be a really vibrant and successful downtown. The biggest problem is you have basically a four-lane freeway, freeway running through it. I think what you need to do is support this plan, which is, it's a start of a plan, which will, you know, make it more pedestrian-friendly, make it more conducive for people to want to be downtown. I would love to see larger and wider sidewalks. I really applaud and love the idea of bringing business and life out onto the sidewalks and having an environment that is a slower pace for the people who want to be downtown. People talk about traffic, and I understand it because traffic is never fun, but the reality is people are using Main Street to get to a place where they want to be, and it's not downtown. It's, there's businesses who are down there and possibly many cases struggling, and traffic is going by, but they're not stopping. They're not stopping and actually frequenting the businesses that are there. There's a beautiful Highway 1. They could easily use Highway 1 if they need to get somewhere else in town that's farther away, but it'd be nice to actually invite people to be downtown who want to be there, and it'd be nice to have an environment that takes advantage of the, the beautiful square, which, yes, it needs revitalization, but the reality is you've got to start somewhere. A wonderful downtown is not going to be built overnight. But if you had a place where you could bring your kids, you could bring your grandkids, where you could let them go and feel comfortable, then they're not going to get mowed over when they cross the street just to try to get to the business next door that they could amble and enjoy and, and frequent everything that's down there, that would be a wonderful place, and I think this is a great start to that. Again, they brought up some great examples of wonderful downtowns, and a great one to look at too is just to our north. If you look at Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz has a beautiful downtown. They also have every element that makes it wonderful. They don't have a, a town square, which is a huge asset to the city of Watsonville, and they have a social element that's not as attractive for many people who want to go there. That element doesn't seem to exist here, and that's another big positive for Watsonville. I think you could have a place that's just amazing, that has great regional draw. I think you should have a situation where businesses are fighting to want to be downtown because they want to be here. Yeah, there might be eventually problems with parking, but that's a good problem. I'd rather have a bunch of spaces full of cars and vibrant people and activity than giant parking lots full of nothing and nothing happening and things falling apart because there's not the money and, and the services to support it. So, you know, rather than, you know, the default downtown or the default hangout area is one of the typical shopping malls, it'd be nice to bring everyone back downtown. I used to do the same thing three, four decades ago. I loved coming to downtown Watsonville to do my shopping. I'd love to see that happen again. So, thank you. Please, please approve this.
Thank you. Thank you.
And again, please state your name and...
Buenas noches, honorables miembros of the city of Watsonville. Mi nombre es Hector Solis. Yo vengo representando como líder comunitario a River Park. He platicado con mi vecindad este cambio, a ellos le ha gustado, y yo pienso, señores, que, pues que hay que apoyar este proyecto porque es un cambio aquí en la ciudad de Watsonville. Yo tengo más de treinta años viviendo aquí y siempre lo mismo, siempre lo mismo. Muerto, muerto está este pueblo, muerto. Y si seguimos así, este pueblo va a ser fantasma porque todos están yendo a Salinas, a Santa Cruz, a hacer su paseo, a pasear, me incluyo yo. Yo voy con mi familia los domingos a Santa Cruz. No me quedo aquí en Watsonville, ¿por qué me quedo? Pura tristeza por las calles, puro borracho, pura cosa que no hay donde la familia se refresque. Vas aquí al centro de Watsonville todo triste. Los negocios, la gacha esa, el de Bildenesa está vacío. Te vas para allá, está vacío. Vas para allá a la de María, todo triste. Vas aquí a la Placita, puros borrachos. Yo quiero que sí, por favor, señores del concilio, ustedes que tienen ese poder en la mano de votar y decir sí, que ese proyecto vaya adelante, porque tiene que haber un cambio aquí en Watsonville, y lo digo por mí y por mis hijos, que tengo cuatro niños. Ellos me preguntan, "Papi, ¿y por qué vamos a Santa Cruz?" Porque allá se destrezan más. ¿Qué van a ver aquí en Watsonville? Pura tristeza. Por favor, señores del concilio, hay que tomar asunto en esta, en esta bonita proposición que se está haciendo, y si están los medios el dinero para hacerlo, ¿por qué no llevar ese plan? No pensemos en negativos, pensemos positivos, porque cuando pensemos positivos, las cosas van a salir bien. Sí, señor concilio, de todas maneras, como dijo un compañero aquí, ¿de qué nos sirve tener tanto tráfico si los restaurantes vacíos, las neverías vacías? Los niños cruzando la calle, completando, los atropelló un carro. Un carro atropelló a mi esposa. Mi esposa ya no trabaja, el único que trabajó soy yo. ¿Por qué? Porque los carros, no hay control. Pasan y no respetan la luz. Ya casi yo cuando paso aquí por la biblioteca, tienen hasta temor, va a ganatorian uno de los carros. Sí, por favor, a mí me gusta, me gusta mucho este concepto de que haya otra visión aquí en el centro de Watsonville. Watsonville es un centro histórico, y como vuelvo a repetir, como dije la otra vez pasada, queremos tener más negocios, más beneficios para Watsonville. Tenemos que haber un cambio. Como ahorita esta feria que viene de Las Abes, hay mucha gente que viene de otro estado a ver aquí las maravillas que hay en Watsonville. Aquí es un lugar histórico, pero tiene que haber un cambio. Si no hay ese cambio, nunca Watsonville va a superar. Nunca se va a superar, nunca. Yo paso y siempre es triste. Gracias, señores, por esta oportunidad. Gracias.
If we can wait a minute, we're going to have translation right now.
Honorable members of the city council of Watsonville, I am Hector Solis, and I am representing as a community leader, River Park. I have spoken with my neighbors about this change. They like this plan, and I think that we must support this project because it represents a change for the city of Watsonville. I've been living here for more than 30 years, and it's always been the same, always the same. Everything is dead here, and if we continue like this, we will have a ghost town because everyone is going to Salinas, to Santa Cruz. They go and visit, they take trips there, including myself. My family and I, we leave on Sundays. We don't stay here because what do we see? Just sadness. We see drunks on the street. There's nothing for families. If you go to, if you stay in downtown, it's very sad. The Gatchex Building, empty. You go to this place, it's empty. You go to the other place, it's also empty and sad. If you go to the plaza, you see drunks. So I think that, and I want to ask you to please, you council members, you have the power in your hands. You can vote, you can say yes to continue with this project because we must see a change in the city of Watsonville. I say it for myself, and I also say it for my children. I have four kids, and they ask me, they say, Daddy, why do we go to Santa Cruz? Because they, there are things for them there, but what do we see here in Watsonville? Nothing, sadness. So please, council members, let's take action with this beautiful proposal that we're having today. We have the resources, we have the money. Let's do it. Let's not think negative. Let's think positive, because when we think positive, things turn out great. Yes? As one of my colleagues said here today, why, why do we have so much traffic? Why does it matter if they don't visit anything? All the businesses are empty. Traffic doesn't stop. My wife was hit by a car. She doesn't work anymore. I'm the only one working now because we have no control. Cars go by, they don't respect the traffic lights. When I'm here by the library, it seems like you're playing with cars. You can't cross the street. I really like this concept that we have a different vision for downtown Watsonville. Watsonville, it's a historic downtown, historic Watsonville, and as I said last time, we want to bring more businesses, more benefits to Watsonville, but in order to do that, we must have a change. We have the Birding Festival coming up, and we have people visiting from other states to seal these great things in Watsonville. This is a historic place, but we must have a change. If we don't have that change, Watsonville will not progress, will never progress, never. And thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Eric Munoz. I'm a marketing director for the Appleton Grill. It's a historic Appleton Grill. Basically, I wanted to let you guys know that we, I mean, me personally, I think that the revitalization of downtown Watsonville could be very essential to our economy, our community, and helping rebuild the whole overall image of Watsonville and what people really, I mean, we can have people coming from Casterville, Marina, Seaside, all the surrounding little Monterey, North Monterey County areas, help bring some good tax revenue to downtown. Basically, we'd also like to know what we are going to do to help address the transient issue that I know that we're working on. I know city council is definitely working on trying to clean up and secure downtown, try and move forward and build a more inviting area. As representative of the Appleton Grill, we'd love to help in any way that we can. We keep the sidewalks very clean. We do our part, clean up graffiti when we see it. Just want to keep it clean, secure the corners, secure all the downtown so we can have a very inviting area. Since I was a kid, I've always dreamed of seeing Watsonville be somewhere where people from all over come here. I was born here. I was born here in 1983 in the old hospital right on Green Valley there. I was born, and I just, I just have a lot of heart for my city, and I really want to see it expand. I want to see it grow. I want to see it be competitive. I want to see it be remembered for something greater than just being a farm town. I love it. I'm proud of it, but I want to see growth, man. I'm here for a reason. I'm here to help expand that. I'm here to open people's eyes that we can do it, and yeah, I got my city's back. Hopefully, they got mine. Let's see growth, man. Let's expand. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Eddie Robles. I live in District Four. I work at McDonald's, which is the one on Target Shopping Center, and every time I'm working there, I see, I see it packed with cars. I see that shopping center packed with cars, and I see people walking down, going from Target to Ross, Maples, all in between. And I would really like to see that in downtown. I really would. I mean, maybe the traffic is an issue, but we can work with that. I mean, I'm supportive of this concept, and I have since the beginning that I heard it. And when I hang out with my friends, I go to Target. I hang, I hang out in that shopping center because that's really where everyone goes. There's Yogurtland, there's Target, there's Staples, there's Ross, just to look at clothes. If we had that possibly in our downtown area, then we'd have more youth come to the downtown area, and that's what I would like to see. I sometimes go to the farmer's market with my friends, but we really just were there for half an hour because it's really not that big. If there was other things to explore in the downtown area, or if we were exposed to it, then I feel like we'd be there a lot more as well. So I'm just here to tell you, support the plan. I really enjoy it, and I think it'd be great. Thank you.
I live all over Watsonville. But I was surprised when I asked the guy, why were they starting with the plan where they were starting, you know, where you have government stuff on both sides of the street for almost half of the distance up that street? He said it was because of the budget. Well, isn't the idea here to make the economy of Watsonville grow? I would think you'd want to start like maybe at Second Street or maybe even the next one up and improve that area first, you know, work from the inside out, you know? And I, somehow, it doesn't seem right to me to think that most of the traffic comes from that end of town. You know, maybe it does. You know, I haven't sat anywhere and counted cars, but maybe it does. But it seems like you'd want to start where there's businesses one after the other, you know, and you'd want, because that's who you're trying to help the most, right? That's what I would do. I would work in that, you know, where there's privately owned businesses one after the other. They're the ones that need the help. They're the buildings that are sitting empty that we want to fill up, and, you know, stop the traffic. Traffic doesn't want to slow down. I don't know if you've been in the freeway lately, but, you know, they're back up to 75 miles an hour. And it wasn't long ago, they cut them down to 55 because of the gas thing, right? They don't want to go slow. They want to go fast when they're in their car. Put a trolley in there or something to carry people up and down the street if you have to. Don't be afraid of the money, you know? You can make the business happen, but it will cost you money, you know? But don't, you know, don't limit yourself by the money. This is one of the nicest places on earth. You know, it would be, it would really be a shame to make it worse. Really be a shame. And I love Watsonville, I really do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a native of Watsonville, and I remember when downtown Watsonville was thriving, and it was thriving when we had two-lane roads. And I remember every Thursday night, all the stores downtown, and we had lots of stores, we're open until nine o'clock, and those of us who could borrow cars from our parents, we'd cruise Main Street every Thursday night, had wonderful time. Now, I just recently had a meeting with staff members, Marcella and Kurt. It was very informative. They gave me lots and lots of data in terms of the cities that have turned around their downtowns, that increased revenue for the city, and that's what we want. And they gave me a lot of information that made me think, you know, this could work. It really could work. However, I had two concerns, and I want to share those concerns with you. The first concern is that I'm not clear if in fact that the cities that were turned around by changing the environment and improving their downtown, if that's all it took, or did it also take that they looked at their zoning policies and their fee policies and all the other policies that are associated with new businesses? Because that's what we're going to need is new businesses, not only support the businesses we have downtown, but new businesses also. So that's something that I think needs to be part of the plan that you approve, is a bigger picture, not only what was presented, but let's look at also the policies. The second concern I had was in terms of the 152 becoming part of Watsonville and who's going to pay for it. One thing that I learned when I was in the Gabriel College Board for 20 years with budget is, let's say we had a budget of $9, and we had operations and programs, and each of them received $3. But then we had a new program or new operations cost. Well, where was that money going to come from? It had to come from A, who had $3, B, who had $3, C, who had $3, because now we have D. And so D had to take money from one of those three or all of the three. And so the question I asked is, where's the money going to come from for the maintenance of 152? Traffic flow, pedestrian accessibility, beautification, infrastructure? And what I understood is that they're depending on the revenue that's going to be generated from the improvements, this improvement program, to pay for 152. Well, as I served on Gabriel College, I became more and more fiscally conservative, and what I said to them is, well, I want to see that money first. Once we have that money, then we can talk about 152, because if we don't have that money first, then we can't afford 152. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the 152 is not up for the vote today. It's a future discussion as well. Any other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and fellow council members. First of all, sorry about my attire today, so I got here a little late. But above and beyond that, I'm a small property owner in the downtown. I own a little park on Main Street, and I just want you to know that I actually reached out and contacted every council member in advance and showing my support. I was involved, Special Agent Hanson, I'm on the task force for the downtown. And actually, it was a long process. It was about a year, year and a half, and I think it was well-attended, cross-section, property owners, business owners, citizens, and staffers, and council members. And at the end of the day, what it boils down to is, we can continue to do what we're doing, or we can make a little investment and see how that investment yields a positive response from the community. I think personally, I'm invested in the downtown. I wouldn't be supportive if I felt it was going to be something that's going to hinder the businesses as well as the property owners, because I'm definitely a proponent of that. And like Mr. William Al just stated, this downtown has all the elements. It's just a couple steps short, and so as we take these steps forward, hopefully, it'll have a positive impact. And I just want you to listen to what the community members have said, what the property owners have said, and look for your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. And there's nobody else, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Hearst?
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. You know, the mayor couldn't be here this evening. She's out of town, but she sent me something. She asked me to read into the record, and the clerk has a copy of it for, for the record. And so if you'll just allow me to read this, and then we'll have comments or further comments from the council. So this is the mayor talking, Mayor Cervantes. She says, "I fully support the conceptual improvement..." She says, "I fully support the conceptual improvements proposed for our downtown. Main, Main Street down, and downtowns and small cities have been negatively impacted by big box stores and shopping online. These proposed changes will provide our residents and visitors, uh, to our downtown a more welcoming place to shop. The development of the downtown improvement plan is a process that has been inclusive of business and property owners and the community who participated and provided input at workshops this past year. The downtown improvement plan is based on, quote, 'complete street strategy.' This is a plan that prioritizes the needs of walkers, bicycle enthusiasts, residents of all abilities. Wider sidewalks, increased access to bicycle lanes, welcoming outdoor community spaces, promote physical activity. I live in the downtown area a few blocks away from Main Street. I walk and shop downtown. I use public transit and walk to the metro station. There is a huge need for additional lighting, as proposed by these improvements, for increased safety of residents that prefer walking to their destination or residents that are transit-dependent. In places where there is higher residential density, like the neighborhoods surrounding the downtown, there is also a need for additional outdoor and gathering spaces. The downtown improvement project will enhance the green space and community space of the plaza. I think the proposed changes will have a positive impact on downtown residents, city residents, and visitors to our downtown. I have heard some concerns about the traffic of, uh, impact of traffic, both for traveling down Main Street and for traffic along the surrounding streets. There will be an impact and traffic will be slower. However, I feel that we have some serious incidences in our downtown involving vehicle and pedestrian accidents, including the serious injury to a ten-year-old boy in the March of this year. And these improvements will lower the risk of such accidents, and we should prioritize the safety of our residents." That's, uh, the mayor speaking. And, you know, I think she asked me to read this since I did appoint her to the downtown task force. And, and yourself and, uh, Councilmember Kaufman Gomez. So that's, that's her remarks for the record.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kaufman Gomez?
I have a few questions since I, anyway. Um, we did a, we did a, um, why wasn't it necessary to conduct the environmental impact report versus doing the nega- negative declaration?
We, we did, and there's different levels of environmental review required. You only have to do an environmental impact report if something cannot be mitigated, and you would have to adopt a fine statements of odor, variety, and considerations. We did traffic studies for both a larger project and then this smaller project. And with the modifications to the intersection at Second Street, that mitigation will help alleviate the major traffic issues that were associated with it. So it did not rise to a level of requiring environmental impact report. You are more, uh, we, we circulated it, we got comments, we responded. We followed the standard process of what's required by California environmental regulations. This is all is necessary to have a viable project.
So this is what's necessary and viable for the three blocks. Would that be requirement for us with the regarding, uh, doing anything further with?
Well, you know, it, it really depends on what the, the task force determines is the next phase. If we do a larger specific plan that covers the entire area, you know, maybe. I, I, you know, it's, we have to look at what the project is. We have to look at what the task force says. I mean, uh, I think that the, uh, the larger project, even when we did the larger road diet study, didn't identify it as being significant and unavoidable impacts. That there were some impacts, but they could be mitigated. So even in that case, you could potentially do a neg deck. This one is much more focused, and you didn't have as many impacts. And because of the modification of that intersection, it improved the flow, the traffic flow to a point where there won't be much noticeable difference between now and then. And that, that, that is what the determination was as part of that environmental review.
Okay, because I know that there will be more impact, uh, uh, beyond this particular street as a result of doing the narrowing process. And I figure if that's the case, that ripple effect may put a consequence for us to need to do an EIR rather than the negative declaration, I would imagine, because we're, we are impacting more than just Main Street when we move forward on a project like this. Um, I know that the narrow three-block section of Main Street is what our traffic study was done based off of the twenty-twelve report. And the twenty-tel- twelve report had quite a few areas there of basically failed grade. And a couple options with regarding the Highway One and Green Valley option, in and option out. And I just wanna, um, when will there be a traffic study done on the impact of the diverted traffic on the adjacent streets?
Again, what the, we gave you both studies, and it indicated that the larger project could have some diversion. This project won't result in diversion. It'll result in slowing down, but you have adequate capacity to move the traffic that's currently there through the intersection. So, so this, this doesn't warrant it. The larger project may. And, uh, I don't know, Maria, you have anything else you wanna?
Yes, I just wanted to add that the, the traffic, the way it was studied at this specific intersection, included the counts, um, without any diverted traffic. So it included, included all the traffic at that intersection. It didn't, it didn't move any to other streets.
Okay. Um, that would have been the, the Main Street, um, intersection with Second Maple, um, from the twenty-twelve study, as the three-block study was, the twenty-twelve data.
Correct, yes, without any, any traffic diverted.
Okay. Um, just to give a concept for what the money is and how far money goes, our roundabout cost us half a million dollars. Uh, now with the only bit of redevelopment funds we have available, this is what we're talking about as an investment. And if it costs us that much to con- to pour the concrete for a roundabout with one intersection, we have to really think wisely on how best and highest of the use of the funds that we do have left available for downtown for this project. That particular project was also over budget when it came back to us for us to do the additional approval. We really need to make sure that we've mitigated anything for the cost factor for this to be budgeted, since we don't have anywhere else to go with the additional funding resources to do something downtown. I'm hearing conversation as well about the businesses and the businesses and the businesses, which is what we're doing this for. We all know that we need to do a change. I would like to see some of that money directed, especially with that merchants' association, which is a direct benefit to the businesses, not a traffic, not, uh, the, the crosswalks, but the businesses who are, we're trying to bring in here to thrive the economy downtown. So I just wanna make sure that I've, I pointed that out in terms of stretching that dollar and being able to use it for the highest and best use. Um, my next question, I do not see that the traffic diet plan takes into consideration emergency services crossing over this lane reduction. Will there be an analysis done on the emergence, uh, emergency response time going to the east side of Main Street?
Currently, um, this particular intersection has, um, a device where when the, the emergency services go through, when the fire trucks come through, it all goes red and preferences given to, to the emergency vehicles, to the fire trucks. Um, all traffic is stopped and traffic is supposed to get out of the way. So i- it is not supposed to impact emergency services. And in addition to that, the way the medians are set up, um, there's still ways that they can, they can get through.
Okay. The twenty-twelve road diet plan took into consideration the overpass at Harkins Lou, the interchange reconstruction. Now that's off the table, uh, when will there be a conducive study to evaluate what we have to do to mitigate the items? Indicated on page fourteen of fifty-two on the attachment, uh, it's page one eighty-four. It shows that we're failing on the streets that we're, we'll be using, um, as the diversion from the Main Street traffic. And this is such as Rodriguez and Fifth, Main and Riverside, um, Main, and we, we hear about the Main and South, Maple Second, which is, I know, part of the three block. But we, for, for us to move forward, for me to be comfortable to move forward, we need to know what is in play for the consequences, um, outside of the three blocks. I, I think it's, uh, and so I, I need to know what, um, the, the question is, what are we doing about the, the other failing on, on the streets that will be impacted by this?
Well, th- the project before us is indeed just this phase one. If we move to further phases, we would do additional studies and clarifications on items that you're bringing up and other issues associated with doing a larger project or other sections of, of, of downtown.
Yeah, a- a- and again, what, what the studies did show, I mean, we gave you both studies, so you could see that there was a basis of, this is intended to be a first phase of a larger project. So the larger project may have some impacts on diversion. This one will not have that. This one will not trigger diversion into neighborhoods. Um, that, that's what the analysis is showing. Because of the change of that one intersection, allowing more traffic to go through it, because the timing of the light is better, it, it accommodates more traffic to go through it. So, you know, a- again, it, this, this phase of the project is not gonna create diversions. It'll give the city a chance to see what the impacts will be. It'll give, uh, ability to see if you'll notice differences. You know, I think it's a really good demonstration to see what the next phase could bring and additional study, um, at that stage. But you have a basis of what addition, you know, for a larger project. That's why we gave it to you, cuz this is intended as the neck, a first step of a larger project. But during this next, you know, year and a half, before we get a relinquishment, and, and just to answer the question, why are we doing this phase first? It's not because it's in front of the county government building. This is the only section of the road that the city controls. The rest of it is Caltrans right-of-way.
Right.
So that, that, to answer that, that question, that, that's why we chose this, because we actually have control over it. Um, the rest of it, when it gets relinquished, this is intended to be the next step. But during this timeframe, we'll have the ability to do a larger plan. So we could look at how the rest of the project will be, uh, designed, what the parking issues will be, what the land use issues will be, et cetera. So, you know, a- again, it's a first step of a much larger project. Our next thing that we'll be bringing to you is an entertainment district to allow a wider use of, um, of entertainment and restaurant uses downtown. That's not part of this project, but that is, again, something we're hearing from the community that they wanna see. So this is the beginning of, of a bigger project.
And how do we anticipate having the money if we only have what we've got right now in order for us to move forward?
And again, when, when we, uh, like EDA, if you go in for an EDA grant, you have to show that you have matching funds or that you've had the ability. If you, if we have this project in place and it's working, we will be lined up for grants. That, that's where we're gonna get some of the, I mean, we can get several million dollars through that. And if we've shown that we're willing to go about doing that, that's where we will be looking for additional money.
Because this is business development, can we have some of this money set aside for business development? Or are we just strictly isolated to three blocks?
Um, the council could, uh, do that. The proposal for you tonight is because these improvements are gonna stretch the budget. To be able to have an impact, we have to use every cent at, on these physical infrastructure, and so that's what we're recommending. Five hundred thousand for this area is gonna be very, very tight to do these improvements. And so, and we wanna do it in a way that has the maximum amount of impact. And so that's why we have, uh, recommended that this be used for, solely for infrastructure.
Those are my questions on, and I'll have comments later. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to move the resolution, uh, approving Watsonville Main Street concept and the, uh, mitigated nev- negative declaration to improve Main Street and Riverside Drive and Beet Street by reducing the lanes four to two and associated improvements. Item E and item F, the resolution authorizing and directing city manager to issue a request for proposals, negotiate, and execute agreement for consultant services with an engineering, uh, consultant. And an amount not to see for, uh, uh, excuse me, to design improvements on Main Street between Main Street and Riverside, uh, Drive and Beet Street. I so move. Items E and F.
And I'd like to second that, um, I mean, um, I was the RTG chair where, where, I'm still the RTG chairperson, uh, for the Regional Transportation Commission when we passed the complete streets, uh, concept, which, uh, that's the vision for the future, not only for, for this committee, but for all the committees, for mo- more walkability, more, more people to be on bikes, um, and trails. Um, what council member, um, mentioned about the roundabout, um, wa- uh, was, uh, we did fund it with a half a million dollar, but half of it was a grant from the Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District, which I stayed on, that we, uh, uh, that we got money from, from them. So that we gotta be able to re- uh, reach out and be able to, uh, um, br- uh, bring in grants, um, to create this kinda concept, cuz of, to do nothing, I mean, there's people out there in the community saying, no, don't do it, don't do it. Um, what's your idea? I don't hear no one's idea of improving the downtown, except no. No is not an option for us. We need to move the community forward, and I'm, I'm happy to, um, um, uh, second that. It's, it will bring people to the downtown, um, it's gonna bring artists, more artists to our community. Like I said, it just, let's make it a attractive place to be.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Dodge and seconded by Montesino. Uh, any more discussion on the motion? Councilman Bill Sitch?
Personally, I'm, um, I'm not opposed to change, and I, and I do think that our downtown definitely needs to be revitalized. I, um, I'm not sure of all the options, but one thing I hear people say now is, we can't even get to the post office. There's too much traffic. And I look at this plan and I think, you know, this is really nice. It's beautiful. It's got some real positive things to it. But I don't think we've addressed the issues that are the fallout from this. What are we going to do about the excess traffic? I don't hear a solution. Well, you know, the cars are gonna be there, but, uh, it, it'll be all right. Um, what about the parking? What are we doing about this parking issue? Parking already is very, people are upset, and we haven't addressed that frustration. So I look at this plan and I think, you know, there's some really good things here, and, and eventually I think change should happen. But I don't want to add to more frustration from the community. And, and I think if we approve this tonight, it's premature. I don't think we've answered the questions that need to be answered. I think we have a plan. I think we have a concept. I think we're moving forward. But we haven't addressed these big issues that people are faced with every day. And that's the traffic. And so to say, oh, yeah, this is a great plan. It may be, but not until we figure out where all these cars are going and we have some type of plan for the residents to come through this town. We want more, um, people on the streets and that whole thing. And again, this is the government center. We're gonna have restaurants in front of the post office, in front of the bank, um, in front of the police station. I don't know about that. And I'm not saying that change isn't good, and I, and I like the cleanup part. We need that downtown. But I don't think that we've addressed enough of the other issues to go forward at this time. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Dodge?
Thank you very much. Um, sometimes, um, we let our emotions get carried away. Where we're, the issue in front of us tonight is the request, is a negative declaration from four lanes to two lanes, and the request for proposals to be able to look at implementation of, of a mainstream concept plan. These are the two proposals. It was good to, um, I, I have to say that it was, it was very good to, uh, I'm kinda touched by the emotion of a lot of people that usually don't come to our meetings to be able to speak today. I thank you very much. Um, but you have to have a vision, and a vision is why we're elected to be able to sit up here. And we're able to keep moving Watsonville forward. I believe the definition of failure is to continue to do what you can, you, you're doing. Well, it's not working. We've heard from two of the men, uh, wait, wait, special agents that, that have, that, when, when you talk about people investing in our downtown, these are two of the gen- gentlemen and with others that are invested in our downtown. And I thank them for coming to be able to speak, um, because we always talk about development, but somebody has to be able to put it up to be able to develop. This section of town is ours. We don't own- We don't own the other rest of the portion of the street that goes through our middle of our downtown, four lanes. That belongs to the state. Granted, that's a whole other consider, that's a whole other discussion, and we've moved forward on that. And I will continue to be able to advocate to move forward on ours. This is the first phase, first phase of looking at reinvigilating our community, which is, as I heard said earlier, it's one of the most beautiful places on the world. It's the jewel of the Monterey Bay. We have a beach that we don't even use access to. We have rail, you know, just recently, on the Regional Transportation Commission in this council, approved reestablishing the rail trail from, so there's access between here and all the way up to Davenport. We have our sloughs, and you heard people address this on the Watsonville wetlands. This is a first phase, and the community has asked for it. We're moving forward on it. I am totally in support of this plan, because to do nothing would just keep us in the same situation. Watsonville has suffered, when it suffered, the loss of three to four thousand jobs in our community due to NAFTA and the closing of the Canneries. We lost not only an entrance to the middle class, we lost our buying power downtown. So, I think this is a great step. It's forward. It's been happened out of dialogue and collaboration through a variety of folks. And we need to be able to do this, and that's why I'm supporting this motion to move Watsonville forward this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
I want to start out that we can all agree, anything is better than what we have going on for downtown right now. And that change is necessary. What we have here tonight is such a narrow focus, because we are limited on what we can actually do downtown of what we have possession of. And we're going to be working off the motive of this anything is better solution. We need to make sure a wise solution to change is what we're after. Regarding our traffic impact, our solution is to this, they will find another way. Meaning, our traffic and its congestion will have to change their course from our Main Street. This concerns me, because we have such limited options to change their course without a plan. A plan is what we need. Come back to us and let us, and give us an offer on how we can calmly divert the traffic flow. We have one-way south out of town, regardless of change, of course. Inevitably, that traffic must still discharge off of our Main Street. We have a narrow Grant Street, which will see additional traffic as we develop downtown. We have a Lincoln Street, which is closed for the majority of the year. We had Rodriguez Street with a school and a crossguard activity throughout the school year. I would say that pedestrian traffic should be our safety concern there as well. I understand we only have three blocks of a vision here, and I do want to see us focus on these other areas. We are already coming, by the time it gets to council, the assumption is already a yes vote. I want to have more of a proactive approach than to assume that the majority is going to go ahead and pass this through, and some of these items aren't being considered in forward thinking. Just, for example, the business plan and being able to have some of the funds set aside for the businesses. That's why you want to have downtown. You want the businesses down here. But traffic is not going to put the dollar into the pocket of the business owners without the business owners having a say in the matter of what they're going to do or what we can do to help them with that process as well. We have, we've authorized twelve thousand dollars for our image consultants to assist us with our common core message, to get some of that down for redevelopment funds to implement a little bit more into this. Engage our businesses. I understand that we've had many of them here that have participated, and they are there for this. But it's yes for streets, but I don't hear more about the plan that's going to help them with bringing the rest in. It's, we will build it and they will come, is how I feel this concept is going forward. We're never going to be a Pacific Garden Mall. We don't have the redevelopment money after we've spent this money. It'll come very, very small in stipends for us to do much more. We need to still continue to make a wise solution for these changes. We've seen other cities, we have gone to Gilroy, which is pretty much still a blithe town because of the redevelopment and the structures of their buildings. We've gone to Morgan Hill. Their problem is that they have too much money and they don't know what to do to figure it out. We've had Paso Robles, which is also a quaint little farming community with a nice plaza out front. But they've gone from cattle and livestock to wineries with more affluency, to be able to make a lot of that happen with the shops and the stores that they've been able to bring in downtown. I'd love to be able to see that happen here in terms of the affluency with the shops, because I have been on this committee, and I have been very clear, I don't shop downtown, because I don't have the services that are downtown that I shop for. And that is unfortunate, and I'd like to see that change. And with, of course, the majority going through on this, let's make this change be forward and positive and see some of this stuff go through. These changes don't happen overnight, and I completely accept that. And we just have to have a lot of patience and proper planning. And I'm really encouraging that we work together to have the proper planning in play here, because traffic is a huge impact, and I need to know that that is being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hearst?
Thank you. But thank you to all the public who have weighed in on this and attended the meetings and all the events that have circulated around that and testified here this evening. You know, I received a number of calls from this, from, some of them from people that actually vote for me, and not all of them were happy. But you can't make everybody happy. You know, we've been waiting around for Prince Charming to show up and fix this problem for decades. We've been waiting for the chicken to lay the egg, or the egg to hatch the chicken to solve the problem. We've had a lot of testimony, a lot of talk, and now we're ready for some kind of action. And it's conceptual action. It's not, it's not laid out in stone and cement yet. It's going to take, you know, more public input and more guidance from the council and staff. So, we've had lots of complaints. We know that downtown needs to be cleaned up. Everybody has talked about it. Now, here's a chance and a plan to do something, something that's going to be better than nothing, something that's going to hopefully bring people together, solve some problems. A concept, kind of a trial run in some ways. So, I think the work with the phasing of lights and, you know, the complete streets concept, making a more pedestrian-friendly area, you know, when it comes to what we're talking about here, it's been, it's been said that, oh, well, there's going to be big traffic problems. And maybe there will be and maybe there won't be. But this is not just about what's going, being in a car. This is about what's happening out of the car and on the street. So, let's make downtown a place to come to, rather than just go through. Thank you.
So, you know, I was part of some of the meetings that we went to with the committee, and I went to some of the different cities, you know, Basso and Gilroy, Morgan Hill. And one of the things that the staff there always said to me is that, and they've all been to Watsonville, they say, we've got great bones here. We've got great structures, historical structures, you know, so you've got a good start to begin with. And every city said that to us. Every city would mention that we have, you know, great buildings here. You know, I liked the idea about connecting our downtown to the river that someone mentioned earlier. And I've been attending some of the events here at Second Street Cafe, right here, that they have on Friday nights, where they stay open till like nine or nine-thirty sometimes. And it's given me a source of inspiration or like a vision of what downtown could be like, because they actually set up the chairs outside, and it's filled with like twenty, thirty people outside sitting down, and inside filled up with people eating there in the cafe. So, I mean, looking at that, you know, it's a glimmer of what could happen to the rest of our downtown. So, I think, you know, this is a good plan. It's a good start to be, you know, to change our downtown. So, with that, I think that, are we ready to move this to a vote?
Other question?
Yes.
Bielszich?
No.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes, for this phase.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Didn't Mr. Padoff like hot all of a sudden?
We have no money, and we have no, and we've gone forward with no money, and we haven't addressed...
Excuse me?
That's a good idea.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break before we move on to the next agenda item. We're going to take a five-minute break before we move on to the next agenda item. We're going to begin the meeting now. Just as note that there is more agendas up in the front. They ran out of agendas, there's more agendas available if you'd like to pick one up. Our next agenda item, public hearing 6.2. Consideration of application for rezoning from institutional to central with the text amendment to allow drive-through for special use permit with design review and environmental review to construct a 4,278 square foot, 24-hour fast food restaurant with the drive-through facility, including a variance to reduce the distance of drive-through from 200 feet to 160 feet from a signalized intersection filed by Core State's group. We can begin the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem, members of the council and community. Again, Keith Boyle, Community Development Department. Tonight, we're considering special use permit on a site that's zoned central commercial. This zone allows restaurants with a design permit, and an application was filed. Currently, there are three buildings on this site totaling about 10,314 square feet. There's three lots totaling about 35,000 square feet. The applicant's proposing a 4,278 square foot restaurant with a drive-through. The project requires a text amendment to allow drive-through facilities in the CC zone with a special use permit, which will be explained in a little bit. And also rezoning of a city lot from institutional to community commercial to maintain consistency with the remainder of the site, which is already zoned community commercial. This is the overview of the proposed plan. There's circulation going around existing buildings we'll talk about. Right now, there are two existing buildings. The Kelly Building, it was built in 1926, a two-story building and a one-story building. There was a historic survey prepared by Anthony Kirk, which indicated that this area had used to be part of Old Japan Town, but there has been a lot of changes and modifications that have basically made these buildings non-significant anymore because of remodels and significant modifications during the 50s and the 60s. Since the 60s, these buildings have been used for bars and other issues that have created significant public safety issues in that area that have been resolved as of the 2000s, but have been a significant problem over the past. The site is located in the main intersection of Main Street and Riverside, which is Highway 129, and uses in the area are similar, including Burger King and El Polero, which are fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, plus there are two service stations at this intersection. The project replaces existing buildings with family-friendly environment created by a new restaurant. And the project will begin to serve as a transportation of a new downtown. The gateway improvements that we're talking about tonight, this is going to be another new thing and a new beginning, new addition to a family restaurant. September 2nd, the planning commission considered the proposal and recommended unanimously that the city council approve the text amendment, rezoning, special use permit, and design review necessary to move the project forward. The first issue in regards to rezoning the city lot from institutional to community commercial. Currently, the site is a surplus city lot that has 19 public parking spaces and 15 spaces that are part of the police lot. When the 2030 general plan was adopted, there was a provision in the land use element that changed this to general plan designation for future commercial uses because this was on the horizon. Council has agreed to sell the lot and have passed meetings to the developers for this project, and those are on the books currently. The project is going to be using existing driveways from this lot to serve the facility. This is the zoning map that we're talking about. These are the existing sites with community commercial zone. This is the city lot that would go to the community commercial zone. Additionally, there is a text amendment needed to the CC zone to consider this for a use permit. A drive-through ordinance was established in 2000 to limit drive-through facilities to areas, existing areas of town. In the CC district, it appears there was an oversight that this was not allowed because there are numerous facilities currently having drive-through facilities. So we're recommending the text amendment to clarify that drive-through facilities would still be allowed with a use permit, but it would be determined on a case-by-case basis by the planning commission. And that requires, there's a significant review criteria that we'll go into in a little bit of detail later. These are the areas in this community that are currently zoned community commercial, which this text amendment would apply to. In circulation, the site is proposed to be accessed by the existing driveway that goes to the city lot. The planning commission, as part of its direction, directed that they consider expanding the driveway to allow full-turning movements, including a left turn and a right turn and through lanes, which I'll show you in the next slide. This is the modified site plan. Again, this is the primary entrance to the existing parking lot. They've expanded it from 28 to 38 feet to allow the turn lane, left turn lane and a right turn lane. So they were able to accommodate these modifications without losing any parking spaces and maintaining the circulation that was previously there. The parking district, the parking requirements of the municipal code require that one space be provided for every 100 square feet of gross floor area. The project provides 36 spaces and meets the municipal code, and the modification of the driveway requested by the planning commission does not remove spaces, and therefore it is consistent with the municipal code. The design of the project includes a modern prototype that's similar to the McDonald's that was recently redone at the Overlook Shopping Center, has a modern roof design, stylized arches. We recommended at the planning commission meeting that they include a stone facade, which I've seen in numerous places, which is a very classy look, and they've agreed to go forward with that. The planning commission had also recommended they look to provide an area out front for outdoor eating. They were able to find a place for some benches and a flagpole. There were not a lot of additional area on this. It's a fairly limited site. This gives you an idea of the elevations. This is the elevation that would be on Main Street. This is the elevation that you would see from Riverside Drive. This is the back. Drive-through standards, Section 1441 establishes the drive-through standards. The project meets all of the standards in those criteria, including being set back more than 20 feet from an entry driveway, having stacking for more than four vehicles. This one includes 14. Having a concrete driveway, reader boards that are not too bright, et cetera. There is one section that this drive-through facility does not meet. It recommends that they be 200 feet from a signalized intersection. A variance would be required for this. The existing driveway has been in use for many years, and this provision is primarily set up for safety purposes. Since this driveway has been operating for many years, it does not appear that safety will be a concern. Therefore, we believe that the findings can be made in order to move this project forward. As part of the environmental review, a historic study, a traffic study, and a drainage study were conducted to determine what the level of impacts would be on the vicinity, and it was determined that there would be no significant environmental impacts, and therefore a Class 15303 categorical exemption was adopted for new commercial buildings that are less than 10,000 square feet that have not been identified as significant impacts. As part of the traffic study that was prepared by transportation engineers in February 2014, they found that the existing surrounding intersections were operating at a satisfactory level of service of D or better. Intersection of Main Street and Riverside is the one that is operating at the worst level of service, which was D. The project was estimated to add 71 peak hour trips to that intersection, but the analysis indicated that the level of service would not change, and therefore there would not be an identified significant impact in that area. The, in 2010, the city adopted the Healthy Eating Options Ordinance that requires a certain number of points be obtained in order for a building to get a building permit. You need to have at least six points to get a building permit. Just at a short count, we found eight points. They probably, they've gotten a golden carrot with just 13 points on some of their other restaurants. So this was just a brief review. They have four fruits and vegetables, low-fat salad, skimmed milk as options. They have staff training about the menu. They have calorie information at the point of sale, and they have free water. So with that, they qualify for getting a building permit and meet the Healthy Eating Options Ordinance. Proposed hours, 24 hours, seven days a week. Applicant might want to talk about that. The standard, the conditions are standard fire, public safety provisions of a fire sprinkler, updating the facade with a stone veneer. There was discussion condition number 66. We indicated that there shouldn't be no deliveries before 7:00 a.m. The applicant had expressed concern at the planning commission meeting that this may not fit their business model and had requested changing the condition, but the planning commission did not recommend changing it. There was also provision to look at deleting condition number 33 if the health department indicated monitoring wells were no longer necessary. I have got that documentation, so we would recommend removing condition 33, maintaining the monitoring wells. So also, a security fence is going to be required between the police lot and this facility, including the construction of a new garbage facility and storage lot for the police department. The planning commission, following this, recommended that the city council introduce the ordinance for the text amendment for the drive-through facilities, introduce an ordinance for the map amendment for the parcel to be changed from institutional to commercial, and adopt the resolutions for the use permit, design review for the drive-through and the variance with a categorical exemption. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, and now for council questions. Councilmember Trina Kaufman-Guys.
Was the study for the traffic on this after or before the one-lane Main Street?
It was done after the one-lane, but actually the one-lane configuration makes it better. It's easier because they don't have to cross two lanes of traffic. It's easier for them to get in and out of that lane, so it will improve it.
So I'm basing this off of popularity of a new restaurant that opens downtown. Are we going to have an effect of any traffic turning into this, that it will hold up the one-lane that we now have going on?
No, because that stage, if we went back to it, there's two lanes in front of it, and there aren't, it's all painted, so you aren't reducing the size of the street in that area. It's just a painted lane configuration, so there's no parking. This is the transition area. If I could go back, or you can look at your packet, you can look in front of that, and basically the transition lane comes in front of that. The sidewalk does not change. So there, this improvement will actually benefit this project.
So we're basically going over what our street is designated to do because it's a transition location here?
Correct.
And the other, with regarding the service hours, since there are three locations, what are we doing in terms of if delivery is coming, it's going to come to go through all three at the same time? Are we telling the applicant that they need to make sure that whatever service delivery changes because it's going to have to?
I would, I would talk to the applicant about this condition.
Thank you.
Councilmember Billisich?
I want to ask again about the transition lane. So are we having a middle lane there, or are there four lanes there, or just two lanes?
No, there's a turn lane in the center.
Is it a turn lane?
There's a turn lane that's currently there, and then there's the two lanes on both sides. The transition will occur basically in front of this, but it won't, it's just paint.
Yeah, I understand that.
The only thing that, the solid, the only thing that has actually changed is the bump out at the First Street crosswalk, which is behind the entry driveway. So that's where the final transition will occur, so it'll...
Are there still four lanes in front of this then, and a turning lane?
No, there's, there's, there is a turning lane, and there is a single lane, and there's a transition area. It's transitioning in front of this, at this restaurant.
And the turning lane, is that where the median was supposed to be, the new median is going to be?
No, the turning lane's still accessible.
Okay. You don't have a vision of that?
Well, let's see. Not sure, I have it on this one. The other presentation? This is a pretty good idea of what's happening. So this is the driveway that will be accessing this business. This is the existing driveway. It'll be widened, these two buildings will be going down. The restaurant's about in this location, so here are the two lanes. This is the transition lane. So in this location, you have a wider single lane that's transitioning down here, and then you still have the center turn lane that allows them to come in and out at this location.
Do they come out on the same side there? I mean, you've got the arrow right there. Is that the lane they come, they enter and exit? Move it right there. Is that the same lane, in and out both that side? Or is there a lane down here?
This is, this is a center turn lane, which would give people the ability to turn left out of this facility.
Yeah, but is the, where do they enter?
This is, this area is expanded. There's a 38-foot wide, so this right now is about 24-foot wide, this driveway.
Okay, but let's say they enter the...
So this driveway is going to expand about here to be about 38 feet. So it'll allow right turns coming in, and it'll turn, it'll allow right turns going out, and then it'll have a center turn lane if they have the ability to make that turn across.
But on the, on the property, they go in where you're pointing, and then they go around the building to go out? Where's the coming out? They come out the same way they go in?
Correct. It's a one-way drive. I'll show you. So this is the driveway that we were showing. This is the entry. It goes one-way circulation around. There's an exit here on Union Street. There's an entry on Union Street. The driveway can circle around. They can go through either the drive-through facility, which is back here, or they can go around and exit here. So this, this is the primary entrance, the primary exit, and there's an alternative exit off of Union.
They don't have to go out on Union, though, to make, if they came off a main?
No, no, no. This is, this is, this is internal circulation. This driveway is all internal.
So on Union Street, can they turn left on Union Street to go in there?
They can turn left out of this driveway.
Now, coming off of Union, can they turn left to go into the restaurant on Union?
Yes.
And is there a center lane in there?
No.
And now we're putting all the extra traffic from Main Street, where's it going on Union and Rodeo Ricas? So what happens when they get to that signal, since it's so close there?
Again, the analysis is showing that there's not a lot of extra traffic that's being diverted. So, you know, that's... I have to trust what the analysis is telling me.
We'll see about the analysis. Traffic's got to go somewhere.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hearst?
I wanted to ask about the, why planning had objections about deliveries before 7:00? I kind of got an idea, but I wanted to hear from you.
You know, because there's a couple of residences in the area. It's zoned residential. I mean, it's zoned commercial, the whole area around the area, but, but there's two houses. There is a house here, and there is a house here. So, so I think there was concern that, you know, deliveries before 7:00 a.m. may disturb the two residences that are there. I think that was the general concern. It's not like an apartment, but, and they are zoned commercial. They're not zoned residential. They're in a commercial area. But I think that was the gist of why the planning commission didn't want to go earlier, but, but I think the applicants are here and they can talk about their standard delivery schedules.
Sure. The, there is a couple of other commercial establishments on Union Street. They, they get deliveries.
Yes.
Are they subject to the same prohibition?
No, they're not.
So there probably are deliveries arriving?
Before 7:00 a.m., probably. And there's garbage trucks that arrive before 7:00 a.m.
Yes, we hear those all the time.
Yeah.
Tell us what 40 feet looks like, okay?
Forty feet?
Yes, well, you know, the question is, it's two, it's 200 is really required, but we're, you're proposing to...
Reduce it by 40 feet?
Yeah, what, give us some perspective here as to...
If I'm guessing, it's from, it's from the dais to the wall. That's probably 40 feet. From, from here to the wall, if I was guessing.
Okay. How about a, how about a standard garage?
20 feet.
Okay, so try...
Two garages.
Okay. Now I got it. I know exactly what 40 feet looks like now.
How many chalkboards?
I'll bring my tape measure next time. Thank you.
Was that Councilmember Dodge? So no other questions? So can we have the applicant?
Yes, they're here.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Allison Hazen from Core States Group. I am the engineer and representing the architect on this project. Also with me are the owners, Tila and Martin Guerrero, as well as representing McDonald's Corporation, the regional construction manager, Margaret Trujillo. And Ted Lim is here with the Arasco Group, and he's the developer. There's Ted. So we are ready for any of your questions. We have a large variety of experts.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Dodge?
Well, I'll start really quickly, briefly. How many of these projects have you worked on before pertaining to, as you heard earlier, we had a variety of discussion pertaining to, and thank you for staying through all this.
Of course.
This has been a key point in our entrance to our downtown.
Yes.
How was your experience in relating to projects that you've designed with other cities downtowns and our key access points to?
That is a very good question. My personal expertise on this matter, I've probably done about 30 to 40 small-box, commercial-type retail projects, including restaurants with drive-through facilities in downtown corridors. And my, in my previous experience before I went into land development, which I have 14 years' experience in, I did three years of transportation engineering. So I have some background in that as well.
Well, with that being said, you heard some of the questions pertaining to traffic and entrances in and out, in and out of the property.
Yes.
Maybe you could address that so that we can understand how this project will fit into the landscape of the area.
Yes, I'd be happy to, thank you. So as far as the Main Street side of the project goes, currently, we're utilizing the existing driveway, as Keith pointed out. It's currently a two-lane driveway. With the planning commission's recommendation, we looked at expanding our driveway to a three-lane driveway, allowing an entrance, a left-out, and a right-out, which would provide the patrons of our restaurant the complete access without being obstructed if someone's waiting to turn left. People can get out right, and it allows free-flow traffic within our own facility. As far as the distance of the intersection, I know it's a little shorter than what's usually allowed, but the 40 feet, it is considered two-car lengths as far as traffic engineering analysis goes. And to get into the site with the lower reduced-speed traffic, speeds that are being proposed with the Main Street project, it will allow free flow into our parking lot. People would have to have a minimal slowdown in order to get in and make that turn. So it would really not impede traffic at all. They would be able to come in, and when they enter the property, they have quite a far stacking space before they even get to the parking stalls. So there'll be plenty of stacking room within the property to accommodate vehicles coming in off of Main Street while the maneuvering of the vehicles in and out of the parking stalls occurs. So that, there won't be an issue if the first stall is backing out, then no one else can get in sight, and it all stops.
That's, that's a very good point, but it seems we're just, we've addressed our questions to Main Street. I would call it the rear entrance, which is on, on Union Street.
Yes.
That'll be a different phase for Union Street. How does that entrance? I see a lot of, it's kind of hard on the map that's, that's, that's in front of us. I see a lot of points and clutter pertaining to the Union Street entrance. Maybe you can explain how that really kind of looks?
Yes. So the way that the Union Street entrance looks is, it is approximately 170, 175 feet from the intersection, so it's further distant.
Is that standard? From an intersection for an entrance?
Well, your, your city ordinance does point out that 200 feet is the desired, but this property is too close to the intersection.
Right, I'm just asking questions.
Of course. It's in the current location that the entrance is in now, so it will behave in the same manner. But it is at 175 feet. It's further from the intersection than the Main Street entrance. So there, all that stacking is available there. So 170 is approximately nine, nine cars can fit between the...
Between the, that's, that's a good visual. I appreciate, yes, because that was, that would be a question that I was asking, is if traffic come in that way to make a left turn into your, to your driveway?
Yes.
How far does that back up?
Yep, it provides nine, nine cars, including the car waiting to turn in.
And just one more, really briefly. Down along the property, I saw the designs, you know, we have these pretty maps here that the public doesn't necessarily, so they can see, but this is, this is your, this is your design that faces Highway 129? I know they call it, I know they call it Riverside, but it's really Highway 129. Okay, well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's the police lot.
If you could unfold that, I could see the key elements on there a little better. Or, Keith, do you have that slide? You can pull it up so everyone can see. There it is. Okay.
I see that the top, where it says front elevation, that's, that's the side facing Main Street.
This is facing Main Street. This is facing the police lot. This is facing Main Street. So this is Riverside, Main, police lot, and that's Union Street.
But we actually do not have Riverside frontage, so...
That's correct.
The rear part of our building wouldn't be visible from Riverside.
So the restrooms in the, I assume those are restrooms in the back?
Yeah, there's restrooms, and then there's back-of-house service where deliveries come. There's freezer back there. There's all the water meters and elements like that on the inside of the building.
One more question, real quick. On the drive-through side elevation, how far does that allow for cars to be able to back up, as you gave me a nine-car standard from the corner?
You mean all the vehicles stacked within?
Correct.
The whole drive-through facility?
Correct.
There's 14 vehicles that can fit in there within the designated drive-through area. That does not include the wraparound drive that sort of parallels Union or the rest of the lot. So 14 cars within the actual limits of the drive-through facility.
And so the restrictions are, that were mentioned earlier, this project meets all the requirements that the city puts upon?
Yes, sir. Exceeds.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more? Councilmember Monsino?
So a question, so the business model is to have a drive-through. What if it didn't have a drive-through? What are the, I don't know what the impacts are without having a drive-through?
I believe that this facility...
Whether having a drive-through, not having a drive-through, because I know some communities they don't allow a drive-through for, so what are the impacts? Is it less people going without a drive-through? I don't know.
Hi, my name is Margaret Trujillo. I'm the regional construction manager for McDonald's. I'm going to invite the owner, Tila Guerrero, to help us answer that question, but I'll, I'll give a response as well.
Okay.
So the impact to, without having a drive-through for this restaurant, the biggest impact would be the number of employees that Tila and Martin would hire because there wouldn't be the additional services that that would serve. So typically, our restaurants, McDonald's restaurants, about 65% of our customers use the drive-through. And the traffic study mentions pass-by trips in the study. So we're a convenience restaurant, so most of our customers, we're not a destination, so they're, they're choosing to come to our restaurant when they're on their way somewhere else. So they're, they're on their way somewhere, and they see McDonald's, and they, they stop on by. So, you know, it's the pass-by rate on the traffic study, half, they used a calculation of half the people, half the trips generated will be people already going by anyway. But if you would, would it mind, I'd like to invite Tila and Martin to help answer that question as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Would you want me to answer that question specifically? I have a presentation that I'd love to make, if I may. But in, in the answer to that question, McDonald's would not be McDonald's if they did, I mean, if they constructed restaurants at this time and in this economy without a drive-through, because that is the demand of the consumer. I think Margaret tried to answer it that way right now. Very, very rarely. Only in a situation where the city will absolutely not allow a drive-through will they, if totally demanding of a restaurant there, would they put it up without a drive-through? So that would be the instructions. But they would not have looked at this site if a drive-through could not have been put up. The answer in this case would have been no.
What are the, the hours? Because I don't know if the community knows that.
Well, that's the other thing. The hours that they've said to it, and the franchise agreement that I signed says 24 hours. And we will talk about that as we go because we know about the area and the community, and I think we have to be smart about that. We have to protect our, our community. We have to protect our employees, and we have to see what is the smart thing to do all the way around. So if it warrants our being able to open, then we'll do that. But if it does not, I will be right at the front of that bandwagon, doing what I have to do that is a smart thing to do. McDonald's also will be doing the same thing right along with me. We're not going to do anything that would jeopardize any one of us, but we will do the right thing. In many cases, we have 24-hour restaurants that are open both drive-through and dining room. Well, we'll see how that goes, but definitely, if we can maintain a drive-through 24 hours, we certainly would want to do that because then that would be the right thing to do. So we will, we will continue to work on that.
I like your answer because I know there's a lot of people that, needless to say, that live in, live in the levee because they have no other resources. But they, and they utilize working, your competitor, as a restroom stop and as the transient population just roaming around. So that's one of the things that I would, I'd be concerned about, just keeping up clean and, because there are a lot of people just walking, walking by, that you're going to get lots of pedestrians walking around that area. Thank you.
Yes, safety would absolutely be our priority, definitely. That would be our biggest priority in, in the late hours or whatever.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
I, too, have the concerns regarding that because most of the McDonald's will have the restrooms inside, and then after the inside is shut down or locked, you know, closed for the evening, then the bathrooms are not accessible. And given our location of this, I would be concerned about a lot of transient situation occurring and the safety factor for the staff and people coming through there as the, the customers coming through that area as well. So I don't know if that was a different consideration possibly about internal bathrooms instead of the external?
The restrooms actually are internal, they're not external.
Okay, I just, I guess from that diagram, it looked like they were outdoor.
The doors that you saw on that elevation were for employees only, for deliveries and access to back-of-house.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies some visual that we really have here in terms of the concerns. And pretty much a requirement in terms of your cameras and whatnot, I know that you do that with your other stations, that would be an expectation here, again, for your safety, for the, the staff and whatnot.
Yes. We have cameras all the way around, inside and out, and through the parking lots and all. Yeah, Martin can talk about all the nuts and bolts of the restaurant. I leave that section to him.
And, hey, nuts and bolts, Martin.
Yeah, he's the nuts and bolts.
I, my other question has to do with a little bit of the traffic pattern. Because we will be looking at what's going on downtown, and while this is the first phase and we're not looking past three blocks, at one point, we will be looking at Union Street. Would there be any issues that you would have if there was something to say that you couldn't make a left turn from coming off of Riverside into the backside of your restaurant in terms of left-turn accessibility if we're having some traffic flow issues or some changes being made to traffic over on that street as a result for some of our traffic studies in the future?
When we studied this, this site, the left turn was critical for, in our conversations with Tila and Martin, and also just making, I mentioned earlier about the convenience of our restaurants. The, the more convenient the site and access is, the more likely customers driving by will stop. So the left turns are critically important.
On Union Street?
Yes.
I know you said Main Street, but Union Street, too?
As well, yeah.
So there may be an effect that this overall, bigger-picture Main Street parallel, the perpendicular traffic might have, or the parallel traffic might have with the impact of the access on that street if we're going to be using that as an alternate for the flow on Main Street. Just to keep that in mind because it may change a little bit of your business model.
Yeah, thank you so much. You're right.
Thank you.
Any other question to the applicant business? Councilmember Dodge?
If you wouldn't mind, Tila wanted a chance, as the applicant as well, to, to speak to the... Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members and city manager and staff, all of you. Haven't seen you all in a while. But last year, I was here to invite you, and thank you for attending our celebration of the major remodel of our Main Street store. We thank you for your support and attendance for that. I am here, Tila Guerrero, along with my son and business partner, Martin, to ask for your approval for the building of our new store, hopefully, our new store on Main Street at Riverside. As you know, our organization has been a part of this community for almost 21 years, and we're very, very proud of our community, of our, of this being our hometown, and almost feel like I was born here, but it's only been 21 years. For most folks, when you think of McDonald's, you're probably thinking, first of all, of a Big Mac or maybe even Ronald McDonald. But it's really much more than that. Yes, we are a restaurant, and we do sell food, like hamburgers and fries. But there are really more things to our hamburgers and fries. There are healthy options such as salads, parfaits, and smoothies. And I know the health issue is a very big one, and so that's why I want to touch on this, because it's important to us to know, to you, to let you know that it's important to us as well. So to complement these parfaits and smoothies and all, we have other lower-calorie choices on our menu as well. Proudly, many of our ingredients, such as the lettuce and the fruit that is in our parfaits and our smoothies, comes from the fields. comes from the fields and the farms that are right here in our Paharo Valley. And we're very, very proud of the role that we've played in having that. We serve quality food, including the white meat chicken and the hundred percent beef patties. All of our food offerings are labeled, as Kirk mentioned, they're labeled with the calorie count and we were among the first in town, as he mentioned, to receive the Golden Carrot Award. We provide food and the information to enable people to make informed choices. It really is each and every one of our responsibilities to know what we're eating and to know how to make those choices. A new restaurant in this location will provide the high school students a more quality food option at an affordable price, but it's up to them to make that right choice. But most importantly, and what I really want to talk to you about, is about the jobs that we offer in our community. We currently employ a hundred and forty-nine people in our two restaurants. And with the new restaurant, there will probably be an additional seventy-five or eighty folks that we'll bring on. Add that up, that's quite a few from this small business owner. We provide good jobs for local residents. These are not dead-end jobs. But jobs that provide personal growth and an advancement in our organization or first steps for moving on and beyond. And at least giving them the confidence and the learnings to move on. Our employees also receive more than just a paycheck. They receive the encouragement and many an opportunity by our boosting them on and telling them how important it is for them to get an education and to learn to do things right. As an example, among the opportunities that we encourage them for are to apply for scholarships and incentives. We provide some of those. Scholarships and incentives so that they can continue their education. Management training where they can earn credits from the American Council on Education that they can apply towards their bachelor's degrees or their associate of arts and science degree. Through McDonald's, they can do that for those that are managers and continue their college credit on managerial courses that are provided by McDonald's Corporation. Recognition for service and, and, and other accomplishments that they get, we provide that through their annual service and awards ceremonies that we have annually. Many of you have attended those. Shoulder-to-shoulder coaching and training is done. Bonus pay for all of our returning employees that go off to college and university studies. They're at the four-year university. When they come back at summer or at spring break or holiday break, they make one dollar more than what they left at because they're in university studies. How many more employers, how many employers do you know that do that kind of a thing? Because I want them to stay in school and we love that they come back. They're trained and they give, they, we give them an incentive to keep going. So we give them that bonus. We maintain flexible schedules. We also pay or encourage them to get their citizenship classes if they're interested and inclined to do that and pay them to take basic English classes and conversational English classes are paid for by our organization for English-related or work-related classes that they take. We're very proud of all of this. That's why I wanted you to hear it. We partner with local nonprofits and I think you know all of this, but I want to remind you. With the Chamber of Commerce, we have focused with the Business Education Committee and we've been taking the lead on the Adopt a School program. We have hosted the monthly meetings at our McDonald's on Freedom Boulevard for over twenty years. And we are the proud Adopt a School with Hall District Elementary and that's in Los Lomas. Very, very proud of that and get very involved with them and Monterey Bay, Monterey Mushrooms because they are also an adopter for them. And we also adopted Watsonville Aptos Adult School. The reason we did there is because we have so many of our employees that attend there, so we decided to adopt them. Very, very good partnership. Our lead charities are, of course, the Ronald McDonald House, but we have a very close tie with the Salvation Army and Loaves and Fishes. We proudly serve seven other nonprofit organizations at our annual Thanksgiving breakfast. Very involved with Breakfast with Santa, with the Lions and a few others. And there really are so many that we, that we partner with throughout the year that I can't name them all. You know that. Martin, maybe you can give a little bit of the nuts and bolts because I get emotional at this point.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and trusted council members. My name's Martin Guerrero. And as my mom, Tila, had mentioned, we are a little bit about the nuts and bolts. We are conscious of our environment and the need to conserve resources. In remodeling our Main Street restaurant, we incorporated a number of resources, saving and energy conservation features such as using energy-saving LEDs, indoor lighting, outdoor lighting, exit signs and signage. Using energy-saving motors and exhaust fans. Using fryers that use forty percent less oil, four percent less energy over common high-efficiency models. Using a white roof to lower the cooling costs and keep heat out of the atmosphere. Using building resource, building materials from recycled resources to divert waste from landfills. Using furniture made from recycled sources. In fact, the chairs were made from recycled Coca-Cola cans, bottles. A hundred and fifty-two Coca-Cola bottles make one chair at the Main Street location. Also installing automatic sensor valves on the restroom fixtures and recycling cardboard and cooking oil. These features will be incorporated on a new, in our new proposed store and since the new store will be built from the ground up, we will incorporate additional features and even seek green certifications accordingly.
That's my nuts and bolts, guys. So we appreciate this opportunity to share with you a little more about who we are and what we do. And we know that we fit well in this community because we love it and we find a way to fit well. And we really think that this McDonald's will fit well in this site. It is a partnership that, that we think works. We're growing together and it looks as though, you know, our town is gonna continue to grow. Based on what was decided just ahead of us here, we can continue to grow together in more ways than one. So, together, as we serve our customers and our community and we continue to develop our people by promoting education as a road towards a brighter future, we feel that we're the right ones and we need your approval on this project. We thank you for listening to us and hopefully continue to do business and you know where we'll be. Come buy a burger and fries unless you choose to have a salad. That's your choice, remember?
Thank, thank you for the presentation. I think you answered a lot of our questions as well. Councilmember Dodge?
Briefly, our cameras. I, I think I get into this discussion with other council members all the time. We were looking, for example, I'll use an example, we're, we're interested in securing our transit center and have been working in cooperation with the city and the Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District in establishing more cameras at that facility. I've talked to other facilities in the downtown core area about increasing cameras and I certainly believe, when we talk about parking, that the city needs to be able to establish a greater camera presence in our parking garage on the corner of Rodriguez and Beach Street. That being said, more the barrier. I would like to see some cameras and you can consult with our police department and how that, and how that works. I would like to see some cameras that were pointed out towards the, behind the store and around the premises. What are your feelings towards that?
Very, very, very strong about cameras. We use cameras in both of our restaurants right now. The police department actually comes to us quite often for video. We have very, our camera system is updated. We used to have a camera system that had sixteen cameras and it's high-def digital. And at Main Street, when we remodeled, I added four more cameras, so I actually have twenty cameras and those four, of those four cameras, three were added to the, three I already had outside. Three were added to the two I already had outside. So, I needed a little more video outside also.
That's, that, that's, that's very important to me and I would just like, I defer to our chief in, in interacting with that, but my understanding is I'm hearing you say that you're, you have a commitment to be able to, to move forward in that direction with us.
Oh yes, that's, that's, that's a minimum requirement for us to do business. We have to have-
Yeah, just to, you know, if you look, we, we were discussing the intersection earlier.
Councilmember Bill Sitch?
I would like to move this along, passing E, F and G.
I'll second.
We still need public comments.
Public comments, well.
Is there any more questions before we move on to public comments? Councilmember Hurst?
I just wanted to ask the question about delivery times and the difference of what, what you think and what planning thought?
Well, delivery hours are, are very crucial to our business. We get two deliveries a week at the other two locations and we anticipate doing the same volume. So we would be getting two, two deliveries. The deliveries come from our distribution center, which is in Stockton, and they start about midnight. And we don't know, our, right now, our deliveries come like at five o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning. With three locations, we may get them all in one truck. Sometimes they come on different trucks. We're working on that. So, deliveries, we don't have a control over what time they come. Thank you.
Any other last questions? Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
This is just real quick and long that, can you just have them sequence it that this is the last of the three deliveries? So it becomes the latest delivery out of the three stores as a possibility?
Would you repeat that, if I may say?
Would it be possible that since they're delivering to all three locations, that this third location be the last of the delivery round?
No.
Yeah.
We could ask that, but not necessarily. I'll tell you another thing. That we don't necessarily get our deliveries to both stores on the same truck, nor on the same day. We don't, right?
Sometimes we do.
Sometimes we don't, but not necessarily. That's one. And secondly, I want to remind us that we are in a commercial zone.
Correct.
And I really want us to, to lean heavy on that because we are commercially zoned and we really need that. You know, it could be that we're gonna have now three days of delivery and it's gonna be each one of those days and we really need that. And the, the gentleman that we have that are, are delivery guys, because of their strength and what have you, with all due respect to us ladies that can still do truck, don't wanna do truck, but, but we need, we need them as well. And they are, that, the morning, they follow the truck and there's just, it's just a very, very scientific job as well. They get paid well and, you know, it's very early morning. For a while there, we had them coming in at three-thirty because there's work to be done long before that truck comes in.
How much time does your delivery process take?
They can do it very quickly though, huh, Martin?
Forty-five minutes, an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
The truck's off the lot.
Yeah.
What's understandable?
In and out, in and out, so it's an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Have we heard from the residents in the area? Anything? Have you heard from these homeowners or anybody here?
No, I think it was-
Staff, there's two.
Go ahead.
What?
According to the staff, there's only two residents.
Yeah, and I wondered if we'd heard anything from them.
We have not heard. We've reached out to them. The, the residents towards the bottom of the site plan, there's a restaurant in front of it now. So I don't, I don't think, you know, the concern for another restaurant has made them reach out to us to-
The question came up when we were in Planning Commission and I think it was one of the commissioners that just brought it up, right? Something along that way. I mean, record would show that. Yeah.
Can I ask staff the question?
Yeah.
On whether it's been subjected to them and the limitation on their delivery on our proposal? Or do we need to go ahead and place that request saying that delivery times are acceptable based on the zoning of the location?
It, it's up to the city council. There is no specifics. Based on the commercial zoning, you, you can have late, earlier deliveries.
So if this were accepted as written, we're fine and there won't be the issue with the delivery being a language?
If you want them to allow it to be earlier, you should take the commit, condition out.
Yeah.
So we need to remove the condition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we would like to be very specific about that.
Are your other restaurants, what's the, are they open twenty-four hours?
No.
No. What are they, open till twelve, one?
We have them one and two on one of them, but yeah. We have late hours and we also watch that very carefully.
Okay, thank you.
So, is there any more questions? Seeing there's no more questions from council, we're gonna move this to the, to the public. If there's any, any input from the public, now's the time.
I'm Rhea Dehart, District Seven, and I'm talking tonight as a community member. I am a great supporter of the Guerrero family and this application for McDonald's at what I call Riverside. They really operate a model business in this whole Bay Area. We're actually blessed in Watsonville to have this family again investing for the third time in the community and in a business. Now, Tila gave you, she almost stole my thunder, what I call the short list of their involvement in the community. The Adopt a School program. Watsonville Adult Education and Hall School for years. Their meeting room for the Watsonville Chamber of Commerce. They're at their Freedom Restaurant where, incidentally, we are served a tremendous and it's optional breakfast. Try their O meal. It's great. Also, we'd like to see all of you on Thanksgiving Day helping to serve the Thanksgiving. They close for half a day and their client list comes from the Salvation Army and Loaves and Fishes. So get out there, donate an hour or so and help serve their clients. And then what I think is the greatest thing they do is their Rewards Night. And I'd love to see all of you at their Rewards Night, rewarding their employees, some of them who've worked for them ten years, fifteen years or more. And they give cash awards, cash, to any employee who takes a course, Cabrillo, Watsonville Adult Education, any course and registers and completes the course. They get cash money that night. So they really have invested in the community and in education. And I think we're very lucky to have this family, Tila and Martin, investing again in Watsonville.
Would any other members of the public like to come up and address the council on this matter?
I told you I'd be back. Again, my name's Kirby Harris. I live in District Seven. I've always been a fan of McDonald's, but I do have some real concerns, a couple of them. And I said before, I watched the Planning Commission meeting the other night. This is regards to traffic and the left turn out of the drive-through. In looking at these, I would like to see a right turn only. There's a lot of traffic on Main and Riverside. Not just at seven or eight and five, but it, from seven to nine, from twelve to one, from five, actually three-thirty to after six, which kind of coincides with the- five, actually three-thirty to after six, which kind of coincides with the busiest times for customers at McDonald's. And I feel that having the option of a left turn at that short intersection would be dangerous. And it would be a liability to the city and to McDonald's also. My other concern is for the twenty-four hour opening. Our community is family oriented and the Guerrero family is really good about taking care of our youth. But it's my observation that our citizens are family folks who are home asleep, probably by midnight, most of us. And my concern is that having McDonald's open twenty-four hours will attract the element of our little town that our police force works so hard to deter. I would like to see McDonald's close somewhere around eleven, helping to keep our little city safe for families. I hope that the council and the kind folks at McDonald's will seriously consider my concerns and adopt a right only and an eleven
Hello again. My name is Ted Rico and I live in District Two. So a few comments I had, you know, with all respect to the family and recognition of the work that they've done, I want to speak in opposition to this application for several reasons. When, I feel like we have in Watsonville already enough fast food restaurants. I don't think we need another fast food restaurant. Also, as we're talking about kind of trying to revitalize the downtown, we already have a Burger King there on the corner. I don't think we want a McDonald's. I think, to me, kind of entering Watsonville, I think what we want people to see is like local businesses, and I recognize it's a local business, but it's a, a national, international chain. And seeing those as sort of the, the gateways into our city, I don't think is at least the message that I'd like to send. That's one thing. I am also very concerned about the traffic. Having, I work in Salinas and so I drive over the, the bridge. And people try and get through that intersection as the light's changing. We've got people stopping and turning right just past the intersection into the driveway. You're gonna end up with accidents. I mean, if you prove this, I guarantee that there're gonna be accidents where people are gonna get rear-ended as they're trying to pull into the driveway. If someone tries to go through the light, they don't know the person's gonna turn right and they're gonna hit them. So I am very concerned about that. So aside from the concerns that you've expressed about union, which I think may also be a problem, I really am more concerned about Main Street and people trying to gun it through the, the intersection as the light's changing and then rear-end someone who's turning into the driveway. So that's another concern that I really have. So again, I think you need to really consider this application and some of the concerns that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mayor Protam and members of the council, my name is Patricia Maticek and I reside in District Three. Six years and counting. I'm very impressed by the presentation that the Gueros have made this evening about their community involvement. And obviously, they, they give back materially and emotionally a great deal to the Watsonville and Paharo community. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to become more acquainted with their history here. But I also came this evening to hear the presentation on your Main Street revitalization. And so I think I have a question for you collectively this evening. This revitalization that you're putting all available monies toward and the tone that this project is, that is, the revitalization project is seeking to set for Watsonville, your gateway. Watsonville's entrance isn't really on Highway One, but it, you do have this intersection on one-twenty-nine. And reference was made earlier this evening to AB three-seventy-five and controlling greenhouse gases and smart streets and bicycles and pedestrians. And so collectively together, I would ask you if in your hearts, you feel that this corner that six months ago was going to be a Walgreens and now is being proposed for a drive-through, the only other drive-throughs in the county are on Forty-first Avenue and the far west edge of Mission Street. I would ask you if you truly see this as consistent with your goal of not only the gateway project, but its successor, which is the entertainment focus that would be Phase Two. Is this really entertainment? Is this the restaurant venue, evening entertainment, Allerton Grill, Dinner House tone that you want for downtown? Is this pedestrian friendly? Is it bicycle friendly? It has nothing to do with the quality of the people who own these franchises. They do a great job. There perhaps would be better locations in the city of Watsonville than one that requires public safety ordinances be set aside. And so I ask you seriously to consider not granting the variances that this project calls for.
Good evening. My name's Tom Nelson. I'm Vice President of Retail Services for Colliers International. I'm a Santa Cruz resident. And in my past history, I was, it's, it's kinda nice to be back here tonight with the downtown because years ago, when I worked for Barry Swinson Builder, we made an investment in downtown Watsonville, which was the Jefferson Hotel. As a developer and in the business, a year ago, you had the Walgreens, which didn't go through. And here's another opportunity where developers taking a risk, making an investment in the community. And if you send the message that, well, this isn't the type of business that we want in town, or this isn't what we want, then the next developer that comes along is gonna be, have some reservations. In terms of just how retail development works, retailers are, they're like sheep. They like to follow the flock. And having a brand-new development at this intersection is showing that something's going on, something's getting built. You may not be a fan of Watsonville, but seeing a brand-new building there will invite you to go further down. I just see it as a catalyst for more positive things to happen in the downtown. And just wanted to put my two bits in on this for retail services, 'cause I represent a lot of national tenants and, and in Santa Cruz County and a lot of landlords. And so, you know, retail's a tough business. It is a really tough business. And these operators operate on a marginal, a marginal basis. And they're dealing with a lot of operational costs. And even from the development side, I mean, everybody's making a big investment. And, you know, when you ask about the economics with a drive-through, they, they bring more cash flow to the restaurant, but they also bring more tax dollars. So when the concern's about where's this money gonna come from, here's a business that's paying sales tax. Here's the developer paying development fees. All of these are going back into the city's coffers. And so these will go on to help pay for all these improvements and everything that the city wants to make to help downtown Watsonville go forward. Thank
My name's David Marias and I'm in District Six. And what I wanted to talk about today is about the people part that McDonald's does. I worked for Teala Guerrero about ten years ago, and I worked for her for five years. And I actually went through their entire development program. I actually had the opportunity to go to Chicago and become a restaurant manager. And because of the foundation that I got with McDonald's, now I work for Bank of America. And I'm able to be able to manage because of what I learned at McDonald's. And so I, I also have four kids. And I also think that this community needs to continue to develop employment for, for kids sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. And again, it's a stepping stone. It doesn't mean they're gonna stay there forever. Some choose to stay there and it's a form to, to feed their family and pay their bills. But for some of us, we take it as a stepping stone and we move to different things. So I'm here to support the application for Teala Guerrero today. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Protam, members of the city council. My name is Ted Lim and I'm with the Oroco Group. First of all, I wanted to thank you and the city. We forged a long relationship. As you know, we've developed the Target Shopping Center, the Home Depot, and we look forward to continuing our relationship. Just wanted to kind of touch on some of the issues pertaining to, I guess, you know, options. We've, you know, we've, we kinda picked up a, a broken Walgreens deal about a year and a half ago. And since then, you know, we haven't heard anybody else willing to step up and make the investment. And so just from, you know, just to kinda echo what Tom had said, you know, retailers are very conservative about their approach. You know, but I think what you have to think of it is that you've got a bird in the hand versus none, none in the bush. And that's, that's kinda where we are. So, you know, you've got a national tenant who's obviously done their homework. They realize that this is probably a risk, but you've got somebody willing to step up, as well as, you know, the Oroco Group. We believe in Watsonville and, you know, we put, you know, we put our money where our mouth is. And so, you know, just from a sustainability perspective, you've got a tenant that's got the wherewithal, they've been in business for over a hundred years, they're not gonna go away. So from a risk perspective, if you're gonna put any tenant in this location as your, you know, your first candidate, I, I would argue that McDonald's is probably the lowest risk and one that makes the most sense. So with that, I urge you to vote, you know, in favor of this project consistently with the unanimous vote of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Evening. My name's Robert Viquez. I'm the commanding officer for the Salvation Army here in Watsonville. I would like to see if you guys can motion and approve the, the construction of the new McDonald's. I have, I'm a father of four kids and they have their own opinion. My kids love McDonald's, not other, other branches. So I think with the, with the construction of the new McDonald's building, it gives more variety for the students at the high school. We, we do the feeding program as well. And I think it will give them opportunity for the people who probably, they don't, they don't meet our dates and the times for our feeding program. We can work out anything for them to go and get a hamburger or something like that. I, I really believe that with the, I've been through the, the other part of the meeting, when the, with the new remodeling of the Main Street. I think a brand-new building, it will bring a fresh start and people will think, oh, something's going on with Watsonville. So I just would like to see you guys can
Hi, I'm Jessica Carrasco. I live in the Calavasas area. Apparently, that's not a district, but I still consider myself a resident from Watsonville. I work for the city of Watsonville through the Parks and Recs. And I've heard a lot of people say that McDonald's would bring in tax dollars. And I, I do respect everything they do for the community, the jobs, the training. But I'm more concerned about the health issues. It's very interesting to see that you all have the, the point system. It's cute and everything, but let's be realistic. We already have two McDonald's. I personally do not think we need a third one. We have a high rate of diabetes, obesity. And with this whole downtown area, I think that creating it with all these bikes and trying to connect it to the river and the soccer fields and Paharo, everything, that's such a great idea. And I think we need to go with that. If you do go with the McDonald's idea and open it, I suggest that, you know, that the family also considers to give back to the community so that they, they could increase physical activity as a way to balance it out. Because I, I work with a lot of kids. I play, I coach, I volunteer. And I've seen a lot of kids, you know, all they eat is McDonald's and they're not very healthy. Let's be honest. Being a high school student, I was looking, Googling the prices of the smoothies and the salads and I wouldn't have been able to afford that. Maybe I had like one or two dollars. What am I gonna get a burger, of course? So I want you to consider, I mean, yeah, it brings in tax dollars, but let's think about the health of the community as
Hello, my name is Jimmy Dutra. I'm with District Four. I thought that was very brave of that little girl to stand up and just say what this could do to our community. We need to start thinking about the kids. We have to put our own, what we're gonna be getting out of something and put that to the side and really think about what we're doing to our community. I don't know if any of you counted the fast food restaurants between Riverside Drive and Airport Boulevard. I don't know if any of you know that number. It's over thirteen. Do you know the number of how many fast food restaurants are between Airport Boulevard and, and Capitola? There are three. I know that we need to have personal responsibility when we step into a restaurant. But we're in a community where you look at some, where healthy food sometimes costs a lot more than going and getting a ninety-nine cent cheeseburger. We are putting something in a part of this town where the socioeconomics are probably the lowest added in the entire Watsonville. We are making it convenient for these kids and these families to go and spend their money on, on food that is not healthy. If you look at our community, obesity and type-two diabetes is staggering. I appreciate everything this family has done. A lot of families have stepped up in the community and have offered great things. And I hope they can continue to do so, whatever the outcome is. But I've been walking daily and talking to people. I have posted this on Facebook and people are not in favor of another fast food restaurant, whether it's McDonald's, a Burger King, a Taco Bell. We want healthy choices. We deserve it in this community. We deserve it. We, if you, if you talk about other communities, you talk about Aptos, you know, they have many restaurants that have come in. This is supposed to be the gateway, what you're trying to build here. You're gonna drive in and you're gonna see a McDonald's, you're gonna see a Burger King, you're gonna see some gas stations. Is this what we're trying to create? Because what you guys passed earlier was a downtown that you wanna create where we can bring everyone back. You're gonna be making a left, you're gonna be seeing Burger King, you're gonna see government buildings. Where are the, where are these restaurants supposed to go, these little, these little cafes that you wanna create? I mean, we have an empty Fox building that's been sitting empty for years. We have to, we have to think about how we wanna take our community. If, if we wanna continue to, continue adding fast food restaurants, then we can continue with the numbers. But these, these kids deserve better. They deserve healthy choices, healthy restaurants. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Tim Zalnich. I'm the Realtor for the sellers of one-eighty-six Main Street, the Oda family. This has been the hardest sale I've made in my whole career. We started, we've had two or three offers on it. The buildings are in such disrepair through all these years that it takes, we've had a couple- with, and right now, if I go down to that, either the house or the, where the Caesar's Club was or the barber shop, you need to have the police department come clear it because we cannot keep it locked. They keep breaking in, busting open the doors. I think the Orozco Group's been great. They took over this project probably a year and a half ago after Walgreens just at the last minute bailed. They couldn't make it work. There's not many businesses that can make it work down there with the financial backing that's going to take to start over with that building. So I just want to say I support the McDonald's going in there. I think, you know, unless anybody else has any other ideas, what can go in there that can have the backing? Like I said, I've had it listed for about four years, and this is the only people that have really stuck with the whole process to try to make it happen. And I think it will definitely help downtown clean up, especially that, that area there. Anyways, that's just my opinion. I hope that you guys vote for it, and we can move on and start cleaning that area up. Thanks.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and appropriate motion. Council member, council member Hearst.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam Hernandez. You know, the mayor's given me another letter to read. I think she's picking on me because she's not here, and she thinks I can pronounce all these big words. Her mistake. Here's her letter. These are her words, not mine. And the mayor says, "I do not think allowing a fast food restaurant in our downtown is consistent with the vision and the plan to revitalize our downtown. The project as proposed does not maintain the historical architectural design of existing buildings in our downtown. The plan will not benefit our downtown residents. Our healthy food ordinance was intended to serve as a tool in a more comprehensive approach to understanding healthy food access in our community. As presented in this report, the ordinance is used as a checklist violating its own intent. There has not been any attention given to the cost of healthier food options on the menu for this restaurant. Many cost significant, many cost significantly more than the heavily processed food items. What food choices are we forcing families with limited income to make? It was also mentioned several times that in the surrounding area, there are similar types of restaurants. The vision for our downtown is to diversify shopping and dining experiences. This proposal does not accomplish that. Our downtown plan has also intended to get more people to enjoy outdoor community spaces. The proposed project takes a different portion of the downtown for parking and for the construction of a drive-through. Additional traffic will pour on De Union Street, which was, which will already be managing some overflow from the changes to our Main Street. Drive-through restaurants result in cars idling as they wait for their food, increasing emissions in residential neighborhoods impacting air quality and the overall well-being of our residents. I do not think that it is a good idea to change ordinance language to allow for special use permits for drive-through restaurants. In fact, continued restrictions on this should continue as we continue to understand the environmental impact on our community from car emissions. Our community deserves better than what is being offered by this project. I do not support moving forward on this project as it will have a negative impact on our downtown and the residents of District Two." And that's from Mayor Cervantes. And that's the only letter I'm reading tonight, the last one.
Any other question, any other discussion? Councilmember Gina Goffin Gomez?
While I understand the health concerns that we do have with regarding the food and the products that are being served there or allowed to be purchased, I'm looking at it as a business approach. For four years and beyond, this particular property is either set vacant or has been vandalized seriously and has been the blithe of our downtown. We've given every opportunity for any developer to come in, figure out what they're going to do with the lots that we have to work with in a small space that we have to work with. It takes a lot of number crunching to come up with something that's going to be cost-effective to place in there. And we have somebody that's already from our community, willing to take that, that challenge, that commitment, and has the reputation of being very successful in this particular community here. Is a restaurant, is a McDonald's the first choice? Probably not. We have, we would, our wishlist would be ultimately something else that's there. I'll agree with that. But we're looking at what options that we do have, and we've given every ample time space for somebody else to come along to be more creative than what we have to work with here. And for that matter, as a business aspect of a developer willing to come in and put the dollars into our community, that I support in terms of it being a business decision to be made here. So that would be my support in the situation here.
Councilmember Bilic.
I think Councilmember Goffin Gomez kind of summed up what I was going to say, too. It's been very difficult to find a business. What we have right now are three buildings that are ready to fall down. We've tried to get other businesses there. We have someone in the community that has decided to step up. Fast food, not fast food, you know, I, I think there are a lot of fast food restaurants, but I also think that we have to make decisions ourselves. What are we going to eat? Do we want a salad, or do we want a burger? Now, we can lead people to the restaurant, but you have options, and you have to make choices. And I don't think we can dictate, you can't have this, or you can't have that. I mean, people have to make choices. I'm concerned a little bit about the, the left-turn lanes and the right-turn lanes and all of that, and I'm deferring that to the city planners or whoever who said this is okay with this and the traffic's going to be fine. I think it's something we may need to look at at some point, depending what happens. Because can you turn left out of there? I don't know what the traffic's going to be like. I don't, it may be too much with all these people coming down Main Street. It may be, can you only do right turns? I don't know. But that's, that's the engineering people. You figure it out. Can we make left turns off of Union Street? Is it going to be a big problem? Don't know. We, I mean, personally, I think it probably could be because where's the traffic going to go? It's not my, not my decision to figure that out. The engineers have already decided. In regard to the deliveries, if I make a motion to put this through, I would like to have the flexibility in the hours to at least start it, and if it becomes an issue, then maybe we can discuss it at another time. Because I think we need to, if it's an issue. I don't know it'll be an issue at all because there is another restaurant right there in the community. The drive-through, we have drive-through restaurants like this all over Freedom Boulevard. I think Burger King's a drive-through, too, on Main Street, so I don't personally see that as a, as a big issue. And I would like to approve this with the, the hours, the delivery hours with some flexibility there. And the twenty-four hours, I don't know. I mean, I think you will use your judgment whether we stay open, whether you stay open twenty-four hours or not, depending on safety issues. We'll just see how it goes. Because nobody wants it to be a problem, but we know we have a problem right there, and nobody stepped up in four years. So would we like to have a different type of downtown? Maybe, but this is where we are today. And I think we just need to move this forward. So I make a motion to move it forward.
I'll second.
We got a motion from Councilmember Bilic, and we have a second from Daniel Dodge. Can we have discussion on the motion? Councilmember Dodge?
Thank you. I'm going to bring it up. I'm going to say last year, when I proposed, looking at changes to our community so that we can generate commercial revenue because the city operates on property tax and sales tax. There's realities to those type of things. Is this my first choice? No. But there is no other choice. Let's, let's, let's look at it from that aspect. Oh, no, excuse me. I'm looking at it from that aspect. I lived across the street from this property when I first came to Watsonville. I had two sons that were born while I lived on Grant Street. And the bars and the cantinas and the madness that went on down there affected the quality of life for the residents that lived in that neighborhood. Now, the neglect and whatever else goes on there is still affecting the quality of life of that neighborhood. I, to the young lady that spoke, I believe that the developers, the owners of the restaurant, the corporation, they heard you. I think they heard you because they've gone to invest in that. And, and if not, let me emphasize that we have an area there that our community, Parks and Community Services is right now looking and redeveloping that, excuse me, redeveloping, rebreathing, reorganizing that community because of the high crime rate. We've relocated, and we have an investment in that project, in that neighborhood. I believe you could do something about that if you so choose. That's why I was asking about cameras. Tonight, we had a great deal of discussion pertaining to revitalizing our downtown. Well, believe me, I've heard it for a while, and I heard it loud, and I heard it clear. And I think us up here are tired of nothing happening, and nothing is happening on that parcel. You heard it from the gentleman that's trying to sell it. You heard it from the Salvation Army, and it's, it's a difficult choice. I certainly believe that food options are something that we need in this community. Hopefully, the menu that's put in front of us and this, this franchise has been, has received, it followed all the points. Sometimes when you're trying to employ, put regulations or requirements or additional things for people to come up with, they won't invest in your community. This business has chosen to say that it will. I want to thank the Orozco Group, and I have a relationship with that because I think they've invested, they're the folks that brought us our new downtown called Target and Ross. They believe in this community, and they've shown accordingly that they're willing to put their dollar, whatever that saying goes, it's late. So while I, what I would like to see, you know, a flourishing, we, market studies relate to traffic studies, and businesses look at where traffic is. That was a premise that I put forth last year. That was not, was defeated at the polls, and so now you have other options, and this is the options. We have somebody that's willing to invest in our community, and I'm going to support that this evening. And look forward to seeing how they can re-help revitalize our downtown. This is only the first phase of a project on that parcel, just like we looked at our first phase of what's downtown. Am I not correct? You know, this is the first phase, what's available for that parcel? Just nod your head and, yeah.
The first phase of...
That's so, and I thank you very much. So I seconded this, and I wanted to be able to move forward. I want us to keep Watsonville moving forward. We have diabetes issues, we have health issues, we have education issues, we have employment issues. It's, we have to take those challenges on one at a time, and by the course of the dialogue this evening, I'm optimistic as a community we can do that. Thank you for letting me ramble on at this late hour.
Councilmember Hearst?
Thank you. You know, I have people ask me, do we really need another McDonald's? That's the question they ask. And so I say, well, do we need another store with, convenience store with beer, or do we need another bakery, or another taco stand, or another hot dog place? You know, there is a new Wiener Schnitzel, and...
It's not in the city limits, though.
And Chevron opening up, two national brands that we don't get a dime out of. They're not in the city limits. So do we need another gas station, another shoe store, another hat-and-boot shop, another bar, another bagel store, another chicken shop? That's not the question here. You know, fresh choice might be my first choice.
Close down.
But, but that's not the question here either. You know, people, people say, oh, how about an In-N-Out Burger, or an Olive Garden, or a Brew Pub, or a Whole Foods, or a Trader Joe's, or maybe a TJ Maxx? Well, those are all ideas, but that's not what's before us either. You know, we've got a choice whether to do this. Do we have other applicants? No. What is our choice? Not fresh choice. So I'm ready to go.
Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, you know, this, like everyone said, it's not the first choice, first choice that we so wanted here, but it's the only choice now. And I understand people's concern. I know even my opponent was, was saying he put it on Facebook. I guess he gets his poll numbers from Facebook. The reality is, is this is the only option where it's going to provide jobs and, and one of the, one of the speakers that spoke this evening, and there are some career jobs. There are potential. One of the things that people don't know, I mean, I started working very little, and one of those avenues was working at working. I got up to some, being, being a manager, then make it to being a store manager because I've changed jobs, but there are opportunities, there are venues, and we, and we need those, those, I also think they serve as training ground for some discipline, for some, some young folks in the community to, because they see the potential, and it's their first job, their first work experience. So like I said, I have nothing against McDonald's. I think it's, it looks like a great project. Thank you for investing in, in, in the community, Ms. Guerrero. We're really going to appreciate this, so I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, that place has been blithe since I could remember. I know even back in the eighties, there was a whole cops episode just filmed on that location. If you guys look at YouTube, you can find it.
They could do it tonight.
They stayed in that same location there. And, you know, as we move, as we move forward with this revitalization plan, I think, you know, despite lack of space in Watsonville, we need to show that we're a business-friendly city as we move through this revitalization process. I know, we all know that the city needs, you know, the coveted sales tax revenue that which all cities, you know, fight to get. And of course, we still need jobs. Low mentioned it today, you know, we still have the highest unemployment rates in the county. You know, we have a population here in Watsonville that's twenty-five percent under eighteen and forty percent under twenty-five, and we need jobs for them. You know, eighty jobs is a good, significant number that impacts our city. You know, we can't continue living in a make-believe land in, you know, waiting for things that aren't going to happen, you know, waiting for Prince Charming as a... county. You know, we have a population here in Watsonville that's 25% under 18 and 40% under 25 and we need jobs for them, you know? 80 jobs is a good, significant number that impacts our city. You know, we can't continue living in a make-believe land and, you know, waiting for things that aren't going to happen, you know? Waiting for Prince Charming, as Daniel Dodge said.
Lowell.
Lowell.
Whoever.
You know, and in front of us, in front of us today, we have an applicant at this location that has been blight since I was a five, eight-year-old kid. So, with that, I think we should move to a vote count.
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesina?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Congratulations.
So, we don't have any emergency items added to the agenda? And that's it? Meeting adjourned.